There we go. All right. Good to go?
Yes.
Okay. It is eleven AM, March fourth, twenty twenty five. We're going to begin this regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Um, let's start with just making sure everybody has their cell phones off, please, or at the very least silenced. Um, and then we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let's get moving, we got a big, big list in front of us. All right, first off, uh, community, community information items from... Oh, yes, I skipped right over that. Sorry, rewind. Approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
One second.
All right, we're booked?
Yes.
Yes?
Aye.
All right, agenda is approved. Okay, now that that formality is out of the way, community information items from each of the commissioners. We currently are working on community outreach. I'll go first, sorry. Community outreach improvements. We have a plethora of ways that we are going to improve communication between the B O C C and the county in general with the community. These things take time, we're exploring all the options and what is most effective. Uh, do you know there's a lot of changes out there that people are waiting to see? And, you know, what it's become clear to me as I'm spending more hours in this seat is that, just like anything else, it takes time to implement things in a thoughtful way that don't disrupt regular operations in a way that harbors inefficiency, which would be a waste of, of time and therefore taxpayer dollars. So, well, my biggest, uh, you know, community information item would be, would just be asking for a little bit of understanding and patience as we settle into these roles and implement the changes that we've discussed in the past. That's all I have right now. Thanks.
I have nothing to say.
Okay, um, so I, I applied to get on C WAC, which is Colorado Works Allocation Committee. And, oh gosh. WAC. Right, WAC?
C WAC is Child Welfare.
Right, and then Work... Excuse me, C WAC is Child Welfare Allocation Committee. WAC is Works Allocation Committee. Both of them are, um, regional and have to get voted on by a group of commissioners. I didn't get voted on to either of them. But next year, I will definitely lobby commissioners better to be concerned. And then, last week, I was also in a meeting with the city, city building department, county, the county building department, tourism and economic development, and Lifetime. It's both the local race director, Tamra, and Mike Melli, the regional director of operations. Talking, having a follow-up conversation about the permit stipulations this year from the county and the city. And I'd say that the work session is going to be wonderful that we have on the books, but definitely there was not any concession from Lifetime, nor was there any acknowledgement that the races have negative effects on our community. So, I'd say it wasn't like well-received by them, but it did feel good to be in a room where both the county and the city were on the same page. And then yesterday, there was also a meeting that the three of us were part of, but I want to make sure the community knows. We were getting together as like a group of people in the community representing fire, the school district, the county, the city, the hospital, the community fund, et cetera, et cetera, talking about the impacts, current impacts and then the potential impacts, both from the federal spending and also from our state budget shortfall of one point three billion dollars and how that's going to affect people in our community and the services we're able to provide. And it definitely felt positive in that, not positive in the potential implications for what is coming down the pipe for us, but positive in that people were really willing to get together and try to support and collaborate with each other as we, um, have potential consequences coming into our community. It felt a lot like COVID. It felt like COVID in the sense that people were really interested in working together and helping each other. So, I thought that was a positive meeting and I'm looking forward to the whole community working together to see what we can do. Those are my updates.
Alrighty, thank you Commissioner Elsa. Let's move on to public comments that are not on the agenda. Uh, citizens wishing to speak on issues not on the agenda are requested to send a message in the chat. Use the raise the hand feature in Zoom or raise hand in person. The chair will call on the public in order. Comment is limited to three minutes, not including board questions. Action, if required, will be assigned to county staff. Let's start with anyone in the room. Anyone have any public comment not on the agenda? Okay, then, do we have any hands raised online? Not seeing any of them. Uh, last chance for anyone online if you've got a public comment not on the agenda. Going once. All right.
Chair, could you make it clear when people are allowed to comment on things on the agenda?
How did we word that last time? Would you like to elaborate on that, please?
Well, there, there, we have not come up with a time where people can comment on things on the agenda.
Like, in the chat?
Either in person or online.
Okay, so, we were going to take the chat questions after and then respond to people, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But then, in person, you have to make time for public comment with each one of the agenda items or allow them to make their comment then.
That's such a discretion for the agenda items if you want to take comments on any agenda items. And you can do them one by one, you don't have to have a global to it. You can say, you know, as you go into an agenda item, we're going to hear from so-and-so and then we'll take public comment or, or so.
Just saying, Peter specifically asked. It says you can make comment for things not on the agenda now, but we said that we'd be clear about when you could make public comment.
Okay, sorry, I'm having a, uh, trouble recalling the exact conversation around that change here. So, we will allow comment on specific agenda items as they come up?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And in the beginning, in the beginning, not like throughout the agenda item.
Okay, so, comments in, this limited to chat, right?
No, in person too.
And in person.
Pause, don't worry, pause.
Okay.
So imagine, there are people in this room who want to speak on things on the agenda.
Right.
Usually we don't have that.
On comment, right.
So, and the chat is its own thing, but if we want to allow people in the room to speak on things on the agenda as it comes up, we just told Peter that we would make it clear.
Right, okay, in response to the changes, to further enhance engagement from the public in the room, we will allow an exchange on agenda items as they come up.
Yes.
Okay.
And then...
Why was that so hard?
You got it.
Okay.
And then in, on the chat...
The chat we're going to follow up with as questions come up at the end of the session, directing questions to appropriate staff when that's the best solution. And we will do our best to identify and reach out to each person in the chat who posed questions. We will be unable to answer, you know, in the past, we've been answering questions on the fly on the chat and it, uh, really hinders the efficiency of the meeting, especially on days like today when we've got pages of agenda items to get through. So, we'll do our best to address questions in the chat, but just be aware those may come up or may be addressed at the end of the regular meeting or post. All right. Is that time to cover what we... Okay.
Yeah.
I should have wrote that down, sorry. Uh, okay, so, uh, no more, no public comments. Let's start with agenda item number one. Calendar and work session, agenda review led by Sandra Pettis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, let's start with the calendar. For next week. Monday, March tenth. Looks like we've got the SCED, Southern Colorado Economic Development District Board meeting from two thirty to four thirty. Lake County School District Board of Education has a regular meeting from five thirty to eight. And planning commission meeting from four to six. All look good.
Looks good to me.
Tuesday, the eleventh. Um, have your work session, um, AM work session from nine to twelve ten. Matt, I know you're going to be out, but you said you would zoom in for this one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and since both you and Elsa are out, then we went ahead and canceled the afternoon and the one on the twelve. Bye. Lake County Public Library Board of Trustees meeting is six thirty to eight PM. And... I believe the Lake County Tourism Channel monthly meeting is still on. It's eight thirty to ten thirty AM.
It could be changed.
Could be changed?
Let's double check that. I'm sure that the Top of the Rocky City Library meeting is happening now.
Check on that. Wednesday, the twelfth. Community copy is from eight thirty to ten. I asked Bryce to have you guys included on these invites just for awareness for the Arkansas Basin Roundtable meetings. And I still don't see them on your calendar, so I'll follow up with him. But yeah, they do their executive board meeting from ten thirty to noon and then the regular roundtable from twelve thirty to three. Um, and I still haven't heard back from Josh on your board advisory. So, yeah. Yeah. All right, Thursday, the thirteenth. LUCO C, Lake County Open Space Initiative. Meeting from nine to noon. Steering committee meetings continue. These are from nine to four. C C four C A Policy Committee meeting, one to two thirty.
Sandra, they asked for that to be taken off the work calendar?
Oh, did they?
This is a private meeting just for members?
Gotcha.
That I wonder if that and C C I should be taken off just because they are membership-only meetings?
Okay. Lake County Office of Emergency Management elected an executive's training. That is from one to four.
Both Commissioner Elsa and Paula will be out?
Yes.
So we have to...
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. I'll reach out to her. And Lakeville San Tishan District Board Directors meeting from three fifteen to five. And Friday, the fourteenth, steering committee meetings, um, nine to four. And the Lake's Community Copy is from nine AM to ten AM. All look good.
The steering committee of C C I?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, we'll take those off the main calendar.
Oh, also PSA, if you, I got my work hours put up on the, or my office hours put up on the calendar.
Yes.
Just a, I know, not next week, I'm just saying, for the public, you can see that I'll be in the office and available on the calendar too.
Okay, looking forward to next week's work sessions. Okay, so nine AM, we'll start with review of quarter one supplemental requests led by Candace Bryan, our finance director. Uh, there will also be introduction and overview of the Arkansas River Watershed Collaborative, R R I C, and mitigation efforts led by Jonathan, the executive director. And we will do, uh, calendar review. That will be it for work sessions. Looking forward to the following week's regular meeting now that we have implemented our agenda procedure. We are an extra week in advance here, so I'll go ahead and take a look at that. Some more to eighteenth meeting. So we'll start with calendar work session, regular meeting agenda review. Communications update and review with Sammy, communications manager. Public hearing to consider the renewal of an optional premise liquor license for Tennessee Pass Cookhouse led by Liz. Discussion in consideration of an individual project order with Kimberly Horn under the master agreement for continuing professional services for County Road five A and Lakeport Creek Bridge Replacement Engineering Services led by Michael Irwin. Discussion in consideration for approval of the disposition of assets, specifically the sheriff's vehicles that were leased or purchased in twenty twenty that are up for replacement, also led by Michael. Discussion in consideration of abatement of taxes for account number R zero zero three five eight one, led by Mark Wadsworth, assessor. They have two of these. This one is for account number R zero zero seven zero seven one, also led by Mark. Discussion in consideration of the approval of land use file twenty four dash thirty nine, sign code amendment, led by Melissa Kendrick. Discussion in consideration for the approval of land use file twenty four dash forty five, additional use permit for request for an accessory dwelling unit led by C C Williams. And discussion in consideration of a professional services agreement with Short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated for professional engineering support for CPD led by Ann Schneider. Discussion in consideration...
PSA.
A PSA.
It's a PSA, remember my work.
Yep. This is, you'll have that work session with them before this. Uh, to aid Arkansas Basin communities in addressing watershed issues for economic, ecological and social benefit led by Tim Bergman. And, uh, discussion in consideration of twenty twenty five legislation impacting Lake County led by Warren Snyder. This should be everything that'll be on the consent agenda as well. Approval of table from March seventh, approval of accounts table packets from February twenty fourth to March second and March third to March ninth. And approval of regular meeting minutes from February eighteen. And these are also in teams for review as well as...
Great.
Just email them, so.
So this is the first implementation of the whole new week ahead of time.
Yes.
That's great, you guys did an awesome job, thank you.
Yes.
That wasn't easy to get started.
Be a little growing pains, but I think we're, we're good so far, so, um, all right.
And when, when do we anticipate the packet information being available to the public?
Everything is actually, I'm not sure about the public, I'm seeing, I think Sammy will probably go over that with you. Um, I'm excited. Okay.
But, uh, the memos will be made public when the agenda is brought up.
Cool.
Because we get, uh, everything else in line and then maybe accessible to most of us as well.
Okay. So there's no timeline?
Um, there is, I just, uh...
I can make, just...
We'll put FOMAs, FOMAs on our timeline.
Uh, let's see, we're back to...
It's delicious.
Okay.
Work session looks good.
Acknowledge?
Thank you, Sandra.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sandra.
All right, number two on the agenda, communications check-in and review led by Sammy Shiner?
Shiner, like a black guy.
All right.
Dangerous.
We were just talking about hockey. Okay. Who we got?
Just wanted to hear from you guys. There's a few things, so we want to kind of finalize and start from any of your newspaper column. I don't know what you guys want to do, if you want to be like one somewhere. One of you at a time, quarter page, full page.
Rotating bi-weekly, is that what we...
Yeah, sorry, I guess I didn't communicate very well. I grew something over the weekend and sent it to the paper yesterday. I, I did that purposely, I didn't want too much oversight. I did run it by Tim and he said it was awesome.
It was awesome.
And so he got the ball rolling.
Good.
How much keep it going?
Yeah, so how often do you want to do this?
We're, we're going to go bi-weekly and we're all going to take terms and, you know, just, you guys will read it and I'll send it to you. There's no...
I don't want to like, you know, break for you.
Yeah, and, and that was kind of the point. There's a campaign promise and it's, it's not about policy, you'll see what I said.
Okay, um, how much space do you want to...
I think the first one would be a letter to the editor. I can count up words, I guess, I don't, maybe I'll, why don't I send it to you? And we'll formulate a plan and see how much space we need.
Okay. Um, I got pricing from the publisher yesterday. I got pricing from the publisher.
Okay.
So for a, for one week, for a quarter page, it's two hundred and fifteen dollars. Because we can't do them all letter, letters to everyone.
Should we do guest commentary for free?
Maybe.
That's a lot for a quarter page.
Yeah, it's pretty pricey. So in the past, we've done a quarterly full-page ad that kind of elaborates on the past three months of successes or priorities or whatever you guys want to do, and that costs about nine hundred dollars. It's about eight hundred and eighty dollars for a full page.
Seems like we could just say, hey, check out our website. Because that's, that's what it looks like to me, is like a kind of an outline of everything that's on the website. Am I wrong? I think we can do the, uh, bi-weekly, like regular posts from each individual commissioner, but when you do want it in the paper, um, I think the first, the first rounds, I can see the Herald doing, was the letters to the editor, but I think then, after that, we are... You'll need to decide on how often you want it in the Herald.
So we budgeted for four quarterly ads at eight hundred and eighty-five dollars times four, which is about three, thirty-five, something like that. So we can stop doing that and put that money towards your bi-weekly update.
Could it be split, you know, like, uh, a bi-weekly, like split the information we will put in the quarterly thing into bite-sized chunks to add into our, um, quarter page things, you know, maybe? That, let's talk about that further and, you know, see, it seems like there's still a little bit of fleshing out with the idea, but...
Yeah.
We'll, we'll figure that one out with, uh, one-on-one conversations moving forward.
So we're going to have a follow-up conversation with the three of us, right? Like what we're going to spend?
Probably Julie with Sammy, I guess.
For, for the content, but what Sammy's asking about is are we doing quarterly? Are we doing every two weeks? Like what are we budgeting for is what we're talking about now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't have a ton of money budgeted for the newspaper ads.
Right, yeah.
So bi-weekly, we might add up a little too quickly, um, at, at a quarter page size.
Yeah, so if we didn't have the quarterly full page, was it quarterly full page you said? Maybe we can shift that since, but what I don't want to do is spend any more money, you know?
Yeah.
I'd like to see if maybe we can reformat how we're doing our quarterly.
So if you want to do a quarter page once a month, so times twelve, it's twenty-five hundred and eighty dollars.
And the full page was nine hundred hours, yeah?
Times four, which is like thirty-five hundred-ish. And so if we do a once-a-month quarter page, that would give us a little bit of money left over in case something comes up that we want to advertise.
I like that.
What was the benefit of the, of the original ad? I think I saw one, it was like, here's the community, what's coming up and...
It was the same idea that you got, here's an example from September.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that.
So we really use this as a moment in a firmly visually desirable way to communicate with the people of Lake County. These are our priorities, these are the pieces that we've made progress on, this is what we're excited about in kind of having that touch point or that tool.
Yeah.
So, we did put the money in the marketing budget for the quarterly ads for twenty twenty-five. However, we definitely want to give you your moment and your voice and if we want to convert those funds just to moving to, um, doing the commissioner corners, absolutely. So it's just thinking about how you want to create those touch points and then how we can support them.
Is this something that you all could come up with, like a couple different options of how you could split the budget? Having heard what we've said about wanting to speak individually to the community and then you come back to us with a couple different options? Or do you want us to hash this out right now?
So, because you guys, I, Matt got the ball in this week, so, yeah.
I think...
We can do like a, I can separate pricing and on their, um, frequency and stuff.
Maybe we could add something at the bottom of our columns that says, here's a link and it links it to that.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if you could have, like, just if you're giving a quarter, which doesn't give you a lot of space to put stuff in, maybe to, you know, kind of, want to know what's going on, then, then link it for them to go to the website instead of spending a lot of money like you're talking about on all the text stuff in the Herald.
Let's follow up with the Herald, see that the first ones can be the letter to the editor and then after that, we'll figure out what a bi-weekly pricing, what a quarter of the pricing will be that we have budgeted for for twenty twenty-five.
It also feels like a lot of the things that go into the full-page ad could be like ways that we could collaborate for more future stories about what's going on with the paper. Like, last week, they talked about the lopit on the first page, and yes, the lopit's awesome, but I also think that there's a lot going on at the county that they could be writing about and we could be... I mean, it's, it's, it would be free media, but also like ways to actually educate the community without us having to pay for it, is getting the paper to write about it.
Sure.
Do you use press releases for that?
Yeah, I sent him like three yesterday.
So you use the press releases?
So I was saying like a communications plan is we could be trying to push more of this into press releases and maybe even formal interview opportunities and then using our budgets, our budget for individual commissioners... And maybe even formal interview opportunities and then using our budgets, our budget for individual commissioners corner and or ads that we need to do for town halls. And see how the, see that what the paper is reacting to. If they're not talking about things that we need them to be talking about, we can come back to this idea.
As long as we can get the next two out in letters to the editor, we got a month to figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Think we can uh shelve this for now and then have the have conversations to hammer out details.
Yeah.
Coming up. Um, okay, cool. Uh, anything else, Sammy?
Um, I have the housing webpage that you guys wanted to be filled. Um, wanted to talk to you guys about what you wanted to see on there.
Um.
There's options, there's, you know, I'll talk to Jackie more about like programs for renters, programs for buyers, um, and then questions from the community.
Yes, we have the hard tools, definitely super important to help people navigate the process.
Yeah.
The uh questions we've received from the community via multiple formats, whether it's online or on paper or whatever. Um, maybe we can print out and answer some of those. Um, with the two that jumped out most to me about that. If you guys have anything else to add about the housing website we're gonna try to implement.
No, okay.
I think making it clear, like having hyperlinks to the different housing projects.
Yeah.
So that even if it's not a county housing project. People can come to that spot and be sent to the entity that is managing that housing project. So for instance, last week, we heard a lot of confusion about the differences between the rail yard. And other housing projects or ten two and other housing projects, and one of those is a city project, two of those are county projects. One of the regional housing authority is part of, you know, just helping send people in the right direction. For everything going on in the community.
That's a good idea.
Do you guys wanna submission form for questions?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Thanks Sammy, that's awesome.
Yeah, that's huge.
Um, and then I, you guys were talking about the agenda of timing moving forward for memos and stuff. I think we talked about. Um, posting the agenda and the memos that we can advance and then I don't think we're at posting packets quite yet. Maybe once we get a month or two into it, we'll see how that.
Those are great first steps.
Yeah, that's. So we'll be posting the Tuesday before the regular meeting.
Cool. And then we're hoping by the summer to have agendas available online?
Agendas will be available.
I mean, excuse me, packets.
Yeah.
Cool. Yeah, I get that. I just wanna have like some sense.
Yeah.
So we know when we're working, when we can expect it.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
Alright, that all sounds great. Thank you, Sammy.
Thank you, Sandra.
Alright, moving on, agenda item number three, uh discussion and consideration of a professional services agreement. With Childress Communications for the Opera House Open Circuit. Adam Ducharme?
Yeah.
Let it rip.
Okay, um, so the Opera House Circuit, uh for those folks who aren't aware, um, it is um, a partnership with a variety of different. Opera houses around the state of Colorado and uh we have created um, kind of a website and kind of a a a community of um. Opera houses that are all linked and all sort of serve the common purpose of lifting up and putting a spotlight on sort of our historic opera houses throughout the state. And uh, there's a map, there are itineraries um, for each of these places and we have. Every year, we've gone after grant funding through the Colorado Tourism Office uh to be able to um. Uh, promote these and Childress Communications, Donna Childress, who has done quite, she lives in Leadville. She's done work around tourism for a number of years um, in this community and we take on the lead. For that Opera House Circuit and in doing so, um, we kinda get the. The lion's share of the press and kind of the notoriety um, around this opera circuit. So she actually goes out to press events and kind of promotes the circuit and kind of coordinates traveling acts. So last year, we actually had a an a group, an act. Or sort of a set of programming that went between the different opera houses to kind of connect them, but um, in the past, this uh relationship has garnered us. Um, a National Geographic article, um, afar, a a variety of different um, press opportunities that actually won us a silver handle award. Um, last year, which is a huge honor. It's actually like the, as as we say, the Super Bowl of um, press um, awards uh to get the silver handle. And we are continuing that collaboration this year, so we were given the grant um, to uh be able to do that work again. So by engaging with Childress Communications for this um, opportunity, we are, our financial commitment as the um. Um, Lake County Tourism Panel is two thousand dollars uh that we have budgeted for and then the um. Bulk of her contract is paid for by the grant that's provided by the Colorado Tourism Office. So, um.
And Donna got this grant.
Yep.
About four years ago?
Yep.
She like wrote the grant and got it for us.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's 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 marketed across the country. So when people come to Colorado, they can be pushed towards this circuit. Visit all the different destinations.
So our investment is two thousand dollars in?
Yep, through the tourism panel.
I could envision how that would translate into bringing in at least that much in business in the county.
Most certainly. Yeah, I mean, the, I mean, you know, they they give you numbers of how much this press will get you.
Yeah.
And you know, the afar article alone was something like four billion dollars, if you want to call it earned media, so. Um, it's it's an incredible amount of coverage and it's a lot of administrative work for us and for the tourism panel to sort of spearhead this effort. But at the end of the day, we are the destination that get, that receives the highest sort of amount of attention for it. And as I said, that silver annual award that we received through the International PR um, Society, that. Was literally driving visitation to Leadville through the opera circuit. So it's a direct um, benefit to us. It's it's a remarkable opportunity and the fact that we've been able to get it the last four years in a row just really shows that the Colorado Tourism Office sees a lot of value in it. Because every year, we have to prove that we're improving upon the work that we're doing and growing the scope of it. So, um, it's quite successful.
Sounds like a good investment to me.
Me too. I make a motion to approve the, I have my sheet, four years. Number three. I'd make a motion to approve the professional services agreement uh for the Opera House Open Circuit.
Seconded.
Alright.
Can I, can I say before we vote? Just as a a um, an opportunity for people to understand where this money is coming from. This comes from the tourism panel.
Yep.
Which is separate tax dollars from our general fund and the tourism panel is a group of community, a a group within the community. Who has their own budget that they work diligently on with tourism staff. And then we're the ones who are just saying, yeah, good job. They've already budgeted for this. It's all been done and vetted. By a whole group of community members and it's not coming out of our general fund.
Yeah, and the tax funding for these are are from the. From the, with, log, log and tax, so that's directed, it has to be spent on something of this nature. Very good, Elsie, thank you.
Yeah.
This also, and this also is something that would, you would have your eyes on too eventually at some point that goes over your desk. That is fine, yeah. So there's a lot of eyes on these things. It's not just throwing money out there every time someone asks for something. Uh, and it's a good investment, so it brings money back into the community, so. Okay, uh, take that to a vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Alright, that passes unanimously. Alright, moving on to agenda item number four. Discussion and consideration of a PSA with DCS Limited, DBA, Mission to Market. For the Opera House Open Circuit led by Adam Ducharme.
Yeah, so um, uh, Donna Childress basically uh manages the overall plan, AKA. Organizing all the opera houses, figuring out what programming is going to actually make sense, updating content on the website. Coming up with sort of the overall plan and she also, as also pointed out, she administers the grant to make sure the partners are still involved. The partners actually also have a financial contribution. That's one thing I forgot to mention is that every destination um contributes two thousand dollars, so we all are. Oh, yeah, actually, Central City Opera House contributes three thousand dollars, uh and the Aspen Chamber contributes twenty five hundred. And the Wheeler Opera House contributes twenty five hundred and the Wright Opera House contributes five thousand. Wow. Um, but uh, so it's a big overall investment, which is obviously the Colorado Tourism Office. We all like seeing or working together on the success of. Um, promoting history in Colorado, but um, so Donna administers it from sort of a thirty thousand foot view and then um. Mission to Market, which is our agency of record that we've been working with since twenty twenty, they um, actually do the paid advertising. So they do, you know, Google Ads, they will actually help with the, you know, how social should look and feel and then also promoting all that stuff. Um, so at the end of the day, they are sort of a a thought partner as well as sort of the folks who have, who helped to. Keep it up and running for all these destinations and they help collaborate with the different destinations. For instance, this year. How we're elevating that experience is people can come and stay at the Tabor Opera House and get an overnight package. So if you stay two nights in Leadville at one of our hotels, you can get a tour of the opera house or go to a show. And uh, Dave, um, who helps a lot of destination marketing organizations, that's what we're considered as a DMO. Um, helps a lot of them around the state, so uh, Dave is helping set up those packages around the state, so um. The, you should think of those two as kind of, they combine together to help um, that uh, Opera House Circuit um. Contract come together.
Just another good return on investment. Um, and lodging tax budgeted already.
Yep.
Um, this one sounds good to me. Uh, how is your budget doing? That's forty five hundred dollars a month?
Yep.
For that series?
Sure, well, uh, sorry, that's that's actually the other one. That's, but for this one, I think is twenty years or something.
Um, it's quarterly. It comes through.
And it is all in the grant. It's all funded by the grant.
Okay.
That's this one. Yeah, this is the Opera House.
Yeah.
But that's a quarter.
Yeah, okay, forty eight seventy-five per quarter for the Opera House, separate. Um, and again, we like to keep it separate. I keep it separate because we have like this budget line item for us. The reason why there's two agreements here. Is because this budget line item is for grants and the money that we're in and out on grants and it helps with the coding where it's grant funded. So I, even though it's the same vendor that we're about to talk about, I keep it separate so that those engagements don't get mixed up and the invoicing is easier.
What, what grant is that?
Uh, through the Colorado Tourism Office. It's called the um, Tourism Marketing Matching Grant.
And we got thirty eight thousand and then the the match with all the partners is nineteen thousand.
Got it.
And we only paid two thousand for that entire cost.
Got it.
Yeah, and those marketing matching grants through it, as you could probably imagine, there's a lot of talk about how much more runway they have within the state based on the budget, so. Taking advantage of them while they're still around is something we're very interested in doing.
Got it.
Okay, I move to approve the PSA with DS, DCS Limited, doing business as Mission to Market for the Opera House Open Circuit.
I'll second the motion. To a vote?
Aye.
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 Alright, that passes unanimously. Moving on, agenda item number five. Discussion and consideration of a PSA with DCS Limited, DBA, Mission to Market for Tourism led by Adam Ducharme.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, this, as I mentioned, uh, Mission to Market, uh, Dave Santucci and his group. Um, they have been our uh, agency of record since two thousand. Um, they are, for lack of a better word term, invaluable to us as a destination. Um, I think that the biggest value that Dave and his team bring, aside from the fact that they are extremely well organized and extremely good at what they do. Uh, is the fact that they work with destinations throughout the state and uh, Dave is actually a a thought partner slash researcher for the Colorado Tourism Office. So Dave is very quick to bring us information about upcoming trends or the way that things are moving. Or the way that we need to sort of be thinking about and be nimble with our budget. Um, because he's doing forecasting for the Colorado Tourism Office, so. Um, especially with all the headwinds, he's doing a lot of uh, research on short term rentals, on the impacts of, you know, some of the house bills that are coming through. So, and because he works with a variety of different destinations, some of them are more suburban, like the Westminsters, and then some of them are more rural. Um, he's working with the San Luis Valley and a number of other destinations. Um, I mean, the amount of money we contract them for versus the value we get is overwhelming. Um, just everything from all the paid media that they take care of and paid media is things like Google Ads. You know, they they help us a lot with search engine optimization. We have someone on their team that just focuses on Google and all Google products. They have somebody on their team that just focuses on Meta and all the Meta products. They have somebody on their team that is helping us expand into Pinterest and Reddit. So we're now advertising on Pinterest, Reddit, um, all the Meta products as well as TikTok and um. They they help us with all of those things and uh, this year in particular, we've built out a really, really robust. Content calendar where everything has a theme, every month has a theme and every month, that theme you will see across all of our platforms, so. We're making uh, email newsletters that cor- correspond with um, content that you're gonna see on social. And gonna see on Pinterest and gonna see kind of all all over the place. And then they also help us with PR, so they help us when we need to write press releases, when we have the interlock and fire, they helped us with um, crisis communications, so. Um, again, they're an invaluable partner, um, and um, I'm definitely. You know, we owe a lot of the success of how we're able to bring a spotlight to things like ski joring and build on those successes. Um, I do just get the final numbers, twelve point four thousand people on Saturday, uh, which is the most human we've ever had on Harrison Avenue.
Oh my god. I heard it's crazy.
Um, so, yeah, and and again, I think that there's a lot to be had there. Dave and I have already, Dave came up for that event. And we've ar- we're already planning on bringing a lot to the tourism panel next week in terms of, okay, now that we have those kind of numbers and again. Um, we had eight point one for the seventy-fifth, or eight point four, nine point one, twelve point one. And weather obviously played a factor, but also the press. We had Associated Press come last year, so we had a lot of international coverage. Um, but Mary Howard on her, on their team does a really good job of getting, she writes the press release for ski joring, sends it to the ski jo- to Duffy and Talis. They make anything they wanna contribute and then we blast it out and um, you know, this year, just as a marker point, I normally do like a radio interview and a TV interview before. The start of ski joring. This year, I did four TV interviews and six radio interviews, um, so. It's it's one of those things where the notoriety is there and Dave and I are really focused on, okay, how do we now capitalize? Like get people here on Thursday and have them stay till Monday. Um, so we're really focused on, okay. Where's our opportunities and how do we really lean in? Um, we're working with Dave's team and the Colorado Tourism Office to completely revamp what winter marketing looks like for us starting next year. So we're doing this year to benchmark it and next year, we're actually gonna roll it out um, based on, you know, success of all of our assets that we have. Ski Cooper, Nordic, Fatlighting, Fatlight Worlds, um, things like that, so, yeah.
And we've actually minimized from last year. Um, we used to have two different contracting companies. And now we're only using Mission to Market and then doing the rest in-house, so. We've actually brought, it it's a minimal breakdown, but we've gone from two different things and tried to do more in-house.
Yeah.
Nice work. And you know, proof's in the pudding. I think, you know, there's, it was pretty evident this weekend what uh. Investing in some of these tourism angles is spring into town. what investing in some of these tourism angles is bringing to town. This all sounds good to me.
Erin, the Silver Dollar said that it's his busiest weekend of the year, every year.
Yeah, so I've-
It's the highest, it's his highest gross earning weekend.
And I've heard from Blue Flower, from Aspen Traders, from Silver City Customs and from Bucci that it was the highest day of business they, oh, and pastime, the highest day of business they've ever done.
Mine outside of the cheese face.
Yeah.
Evidence, evidence-based results.
Aspen Traders has been open for over 20 years, so that fills my heart. You know, that's, that's why we do this.
I can personally attest to the Manhattan. Standing room only and falling on the sidewalk. All right. Motion to approve Agenda Item Number Five.
I'll move to approve the PSA with DCS Limited doing business as Mission to Market for Tourism.
I will second the motion. All right, to a vote?
Aye.
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 All right, thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
Good job. Good work, guys. See you tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right, moving on. Agenda Item Number Six. Discussion and Consideration of an Amendment to the PSA with SE Group for Additional Services Related to the Harrison Park Master Plan, led by Jackie Wellahan. Go ahead, Jackie.
Hello, thank you for hearing that question.
In the room?
Yeah. I'm just thinking we said we would give opportunity for public comment. I'm just realizing we haven't done that in any of these years.
Sure, yeah. Did anyone have any public comment about tourism, the opera house or the investment marketing? Okay, sorry, okay, rewinding. Agenda Item Number Six. Go ahead, Jackie, sorry for the interruption.
No, you're fine. So the SE Group was the firm that was selected to conduct the master plan process for Harrison. They have requested an amendment to the contract for additional coordination time for the second open house. This was a request from the previous BOCC to have an additional public engagement opportunity that was held on January 22nd. There was a morning and an evening session held at the public library. And then in addition to that, they had some material modifications for that open house, trying to engage the local businesses to come to that meeting. They also put out a survey and, and the work that went into that as well as the survey results. They've also indicated that the traffic study for Harrison has additional costs associated with it to $26,000 and advertising costs for the survey that was sent around the community for $1,100 for a grand total of $16,200, making the overall contract 205,922.50 for the master planning. As, as you know, this planning is through the Incentives Grant. And some good news on the Incentives Grant. I think I had an opportunity to tell Matt and Elsa about this, but I have not had a chance to tell you that we had, and we were, we were awarded the grant and we had to scramble and find new sites to build the housing on. And I had sent a letter to DOLA asking if, along with an appraisal, asking if the dedication of the land could be counted as our match for the Incentives Grant. And I got no response and I thought, okay, too, too little, too late. And I called them last week on Friday and heard back that we can actually count the land as our match. And so I will be able to resubmit and get the 20% of all the invoices that I accepted thus far. So it's a 100% match with, with the grant contribution. So that's great news. And this, this will be, as, this will be part of that grant. Michael has joined us as well to talk about the importance of, I guess, all of these things in addition to specifically the traffic study.
Yeah, so the, the addition on the traffic study, the school district is currently looking and engaging Architecture Services for the expansion of their facility south of Harrison. And that addition would be to the west side of the building, which is where the school drop-off access lane is. So in hearing neighborhood concerns through the public outreach, one of the things that we heard was that traffic and safe routes to school is a major concern with the Harrison site and taking a holistic look at how do we provide the best possible, safest possible traffic flow around the school and in any new uses on site. And so that is really going to be the focus while school's still in session. The project is to really take a deep dive, working with the school district, on how do we improve access and how do we ensure that traffic and safe routes to schools, looking at pedestrian movements and intersection concerns in this traffic study. It's a, it's a, the timing is right because of the school's engagement with their architect to have these conversations and to talk about whether or not any realignment of their current drop-off situation would be, would be appropriate. And so that's why you're seeing that traffic. And again, I want to emphasize that, you know, we are listening to what the neighbors spoke about at the open houses. And this is the opportunity that we're taking, if approved, to really do a deep dive and ensure that we have addressed any future traffic concerns as well as doing projected growth at the facility, at the school's facility in, in Harrison.
Great, thanks, Mike. So this PSA, this amendment to the PSA is 100% grant funded, which is the important part that jumps out at me right away. And again, these are just plans. This is not a concrete decision in any way. So knowing what options are out there and having it be 100% grant funded sits okay with me on this.
Um, Michael, with the schools doing, with the schools re, re-
Consolidation.
Consolidating, you, with the schools consolidating and more students going to be at LCES in the future years, like how, how timely is this traffic study? If we know that it's going to increase in the future, not only with a potential Harrison Park development, but also with the school's consolidation, like is that, is that data-
Yeah, that's, that's all, that's, that's what we'll be looking at, right? So what, what we do is we get current traffic data and then the traffic engineer does projections on increased suit of population, you know, additional potential uses around the site if there was housing or a rec center or anything developed there. So that we can project what kind of turn movements we'd be seeing around the site, what kind of pedestrian crossings we'd be seeing. And the other big thing that I think is a really important focus that we talked about internally, and, and I can just tell you this from being in Crestabute, we implemented a safe routes to school program when the school expanded there. And we created a, a safe route along A Street. If you've ever been to Crestabute, there's a trail that goes across the whole entire south end of the community that we, but we had to design it, as you guys have the same issue, we had to really take into account quite a bit of snow storage concerns. And if you've ever been there and you've seen the piles of snow in the winter on the side of that trail, looking at those types of issues with the school district about how we maintain a safe route through the school season, which is primarily in winter, is also a part of kind of this whole design exercise of moving forward. The other, I think, the other really important update that I don't think we hit on is that we did get the okay from the state to allow the One Community Process to proceed prior to any additional engagement from, to be talking about Harrison. I think that's, that was a really big win for the county to get the green light, to put the brakes on Harrison for now, to allow the One Community Project to have a more robust conversation around housing for the entire community and to see if Harrison fits within that discussion. So I want to make sure that that's emphasized. The only thing that's timely about what needs to kind of currently occur is that you can't do traffic data in June when school's out of session. You have to do it when the cars are turning in and out of the site on a, on a Tuesday when parents are dropping folks, looking their kids off. So getting that data, putting out the traffic counters, getting that is instrumental now versus waiting until the One Community Process is, is complete. It also allows us to engage right now with the school district with their current facility expansion plans as well.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
Great.
I have a couple of things I'd like to say about this. The traffic study is one thing, but lumping it in with the other things is concerning. I don't mind reimbursing for advertisement costs, but to try and get reimbursed for the open house at $3,500, I realize this is all grant money, but you know, that, that's a change order that should have happened before the open house and been approved by the BOCC board if that's what it was going to cost. And then as far as the timeline extension, I'd, I'd want to know, I couldn't, I didn't receive any information of why if there's a pause in work, that costs us extra money. So I'd say I'd need more information. And also I'd like to see everything that we've gotten so far for almost $200,000 and, and why we've got a change order coming. So I guess I need, I'd like more information and I'd like to see the items split out. That's all I've got.
So Jackie, you want me to answer a little bit of that?
I sure do.
So first and foremost, we have, the SE Group hasn't billed the full 200,000. Jackie, I believe we've only received invoices around 50,000 so far for the two open houses. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the, the change order is from the BOCC, the previous BOCC's request, after we heard neighborhood pushback, to engage the public again in a second open house and survey. So just to be clear there, that, that's, that the, the full process hasn't played out. And then as far as the timeline, we are meeting with community builders in the county and the city next, in the next couple of weeks to develop a timeline so that we ensure that the One Community Process and the comp plan is able to be completed. So we will have a more timely update once we're able to coordinate with community builders and transfer that. But last piece of the, Matt, just to make sure you're aware, all of the survey data and everything that has been completed thus far is on the Harrison Master Plan website. So you can look at the, the survey responses and all of those results. So that, that information is available.
I don't have any other questions. I agree, it's great when people know when they're going to make a change or an updated request, that they also know the cost. And I'm glad that we're doing that now. And I also agree, I wish it had been done before. But they did it and I feel like we don't get to not pay them for work that was requested that they do.
Yeah, I guess I still don't understand the timeline extension of 5,600. You know, who gets that? And, and I guess I'm, I just, I'd like more information. I'd like to wait on this and I'd like to see it split out. I'd like to see the, you know, the RFP for the traffic proposals. Are multiple companies? Is there one company? I just, the, the numbers are too big and too round for me. And like I say, just because it's a grant, you know, how, I don't know. Michael, I'm sorry, I just don't have enough information right now.
No, I, I completely understand what you're requesting. I, I don't, I would ask Tim or Chris if the appropriate action is to, and again, I, I, I can't really directly speak to the actual proposal because it's done by a third-party consultant, SE Group. So I think the questions you're asking are a little bit beyond what I am comfortable speaking for on behalf of SE Group, because I, obviously that's not my firm, it's their firm. So I think maybe Jackie is the appropriate action to request that this gets tabled to the 18th and have SE Group come prepared to answer. And I, and I just want to be real clear on the direction that you're asking for is specifics on the additional coordination, what will be covered under the traffic study?
I would, I'd like to see a breakout of, of why, you know, if I was to bill so many 5,600, I'd have a cost breakdown and invoicing of ours or at least what we were going to get for the money. And just because it's a grant, I, I'm just not comfortable with it.
The traffic study is pretty self-explanatory. The other three items would be nice to see more details on. The one question I do have though is delaying this two weeks. Does that put any of the grant funding in jeopardy at all, Jackie? No, okay. Yeah, I don't see any prob, I kind of agree with Matt, that it'd be nice to get a little more information.
Yeah, and the only thing I could, we did meet on the 5,600. I think just, just to give you a primer on that, but I do think it's appropriate for SE Group to represent themselves on that. But just, you know, the biggest, the biggest is that the coordination between SE Group and getting the information to community builders of all of the data and everything that's been collected so that that isn't being, the worst thing we can do as consultants is to ask the community again their opinion on things they've already given us their opinion on. So ensuring that, you know, I do want to make sure that commissioners know that there is going to be a big handoff, passing the baton to the comp plan process. So I think that's part of it, as well as the extra coordination, now that we've discovered that the school is, is proceeding with architecture. So there's, there's some additional school board meetings that they were anticipating having to attend. So, but I, I think if you want to table this to the 18th, that would be the appropriate action and we could have SE Group plan to attend and provide more detail.
Great.
I'll make a motion to table the amendment to the PSA with SE Group for Additional Services Related to the Harrison Park Plan.
Seconded.
All right, take it to a vote?
No, can we discuss?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. To March 18th.
Seconded.
Any further discussion before we vote?
Yeah, I just want to say we, since this was on the agenda, if we wanted to offer people in the room to have public comment, we, we would do that before a vote.
Right.
We don't have to offer public comment, we're just trying to keep it tidy.
Thank you.
In the room, yeah. Sorry, I'm reading off a script so much that sometimes it's-
Don't worry, that's our first one.
Does anyone in the room have any comment about the, I motion to table this until the 18th or the subject itself? Okay, thank you. All right, then take that to a vote?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Nice.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Seven. Discussion and Consideration of a Grant From the Electronic Recording Technology Board in the Amount of $115,489.52 to Establish, Maintain, Improve, or Replace the County's Electronic Filing System, led by Tracy Larts, a county clerk. Go ahead, Tracy.
Thank you. A little background, the Electronic Recording Technology Board for the last seven, eight years has collected a $2 fee on every document that's been recorded electronically. And then they turn it around and offer grants to help counties come into the 21st century on recording. Last year, we received $184,000 that paid for all digitizing and web hosting and maintenance fees going back seven years. So we applied for this in January to- the director of the A's, it's all specified. Um, that's a paper, last year's web hosting, this year's web hosting, a new server that we desperately need. Um, and some more digitizing and indexing. We've already been approved for it, we just need your approval.
This is a purely grant, there's no match size from the county?
Okay, now this is gonna sound really ridiculous, but this is not my realm. Um, so my understanding is that we purchased a server.
That was not, I was not involved in any of that, I didn't know anything about it. We had this in the works the entire time.
Okay, but we ha- but we have it now, so why is?
My understanding is it's not big enough. Again, we didn't work with our vendor to determine a, a something.
Okay, I, m- my understanding from L E D S or whatever, LEDs,
LEDs.
Um, is that the cer- and is that the server that we got before they, before, oh my gosh, I'm sorry if I can't remember, but Applied Tech got it, the software configured to be able to switch over all of the L E D S information to this new server.
So I am in charge of recording by state statute.
Right, yeah.
I was not involved in any of that. Nobody brought it to me, nobody got my approval for it.
Yeah, yeah.
This is what we wanna have.
Okay, so just to be, just so I understand, the server that we got is no good?
I don't know anything about the server you already purchased.
Who could, okay, I'm just trying to be diligent with the resources that we already did acquire. So that's why I'm asking, cuz I thought when I read that we got, that this is for a new server. Okay, but we have it and this would be a new one. So I'm just wondering, who do we talk to to like check to see if it's a good enough server? Like, do you?
I don't, sorry, they told that it's not good enough.
By, by whom? By LEDs? Oh, LEDs told me that it was fine. Okay, well, that's disappointing cuz we did buy a new server specifically for this. I appreciate that this is grant-funded. Um, I just didn't want to get more another server and then have an obsolete server sitting here. So that was my question.
I have to determine.
Yeah.
I, again, I was not involved in any of that. Um.
Okay, I can't help you with that.
True, my, my concern is that if we apply for this grant and purchase something.
Yeah, we've already applied for it and approved.
What? Okay, what happens if we, um, don't utilize this in the way that we are supposed to be in, intended to utilize this? Does that put future grants at jeopardy?
Why wouldn't we utilize?
Well, if we've already got. It sounds like there's some confusion or some conflicting reports from LEDs about what we have versus what we're about to purchase with this grant money. I, and again, I'm new to this too, so maybe, you know, what I'm saying is a non-issue. But, um, if we receive a grant for something and then we don't fully utilize it, does that put future grants at jeopardy?
Oh, like the server that we did get, I don't think that was with the grant, just.
Well, what I'm saying, say, since we've got conflicting reports, I'm not discounting what Tracy's saying, but there's also conflicting reports now that we're hearing. So in, I wanna plan for the event that any of them could potentially be how things work out. My worry is, it sounds like last year this was a sizable grant, this year it's a pretty decent one too. I don't wanna put future ones in jeopardy by finding out that we don't utilize this one as they intend.
All right, so Sunset, I'll note its fee and I think it's coming up fairly quickly, so.
It might not happen again too.
Yeah. Um, again, I.
This might be the last chance to get.
We've already ordered the server.
Oh.
Cuz we were awarded the grant. We just need to sign off by the chair. Um, I don't know what to tell you. It is my responsibility to run recording by state statute. If your staff go off and do something without involving me, I'm not responsible for that.
Totally. Okay, is this new server going to be? So one of the things that I've heard is that we have a technology contractor, Applied Tech. Anybody, any staff, please, please tell me if I'm getting this wrong. But we have Applied Tech and then you have your own contractor.
Correct, Technology West.
Techwest. Um, will the, if there is an issue with this new server.
Technology West will take care of it.
Okay, but you're using Technology West through a grant, right?
For this, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But so Jean's, Jean's contracting is not through a grant, goes through?
Um, depends on which, so, uh, Jean worked with us to install through grant all the security stuff for the election. So we had a grant through that. And then he worked with us, we had a HAVA grant, which is Help America Vote Act. Um, that was, they had a twenty percent match and that updated, um, our, um, Wi-Fi and some of that stuff. And so he is under contract through that, with the maintenance agreement, to maintain all that new equipment. And he will also be under contract with us to maintain the equipment for LEDs.
Through a grant.
Through this grant.
Here's, here's what I'm asking, Tracy. What I'm, what I don't want to have happen is that Technology West, Technology West installs something that Applied Tech can't help anybody with. Like, we have a con- we have a contractor for all of our other software and equipment and I wanna make sure that the clerk's office is supported when you need to.
Can I tell you a little story then?
Yeah.
When I first started in the summer, um, everything shut down. We couldn't do anything with recording, everything was shut down. Called Applied Tech, they refused to come up here for three days. I called John at LEDs, John Paulson's the primary, um, at LEDs. He put down his work, he drove up here, got on the phone with Applied Tech that afternoon and got everything fixed. So my relationship with Applied Tech is, eh, they're okay, but they are not supportive. They don't have anybody local to help. Um, Jean had, took out Carbonell and he had a guy in BP who could be here with him now.
Okay.
So I, I've created this system for exactly that, that weren't supported. I know that they're gonna be here and I trust them.
Well, if, the other issue though is that if she, if the grant runs out, then we also have to find money to pay for two different technology vendors, which is to be our.
Yep, a minimal cost.
For Applied Tech.
About two thousand dollars.
Techwest, two dollars a, two thousand dollars a month?
Per day, yeah.
What? It's for you? Thank you.
Yeah, on one hand, it sounds like a duplicate service, on the other hand, two thousand a year is not
It's nothing.
a massive amount. Um, is there anyone else in the room who has anything to chime in on this? Because I, I'm too new to understand the finer details of all of this and it's, it's a lot.
Unfortunately, I think Liz would be the one who probably has more of the background in this than we do.
I, I asked Liz about it, I feel okay with it.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask this question.
Followed one, Tracy, is this gonna help you do your job more efficiently?
Yes.
It's gonna be an overall benefit for all the voters and everybody who comes into your office?
Not voters, uh, recording type of companies.
Okay.
You know, all your deeds and warranties.
Two separate operating systems and I, I, I think that's the main point of contention?
Well, our operating system, it's always been separate.
No, but I, it was two different servers and I, I understand that the clerk's server is at ninety percent capacity. Like, this is definitely crucial. Absolutely. Yeah, I was just, I just heard that we already had a server and that's why I was asking, like, do we need the new one? And I, I respect that this is the one most wanted.
Nobody discussed it with me, I am in charge of recording.
Right, right.
Um, that person was specifically told by the previous board to make sure to put in lock communications and they chose not to do that, yeah.
I may interject, Chair.
You may.
I have the documentation of all of the communications with the clerk and recorder and the previous I T manager about this specific project. Um, so personality differences aside, I do not think it's tenable to sit here and lie and throw staff under the bus.
I'm not lying.
Should I pull up the emails?
How dare you say I'm.
Should I pull up the emails?
Yeah, please do.
Hey, guys, let's stay on topic here within the realm of agenda item number seven. Um, I think that the board's biggest questions are if this goes south due to efficiency reasons between having two different servers, are we putting future grants in jeopardy? And my understanding of that was no.
No.
The next, um, concerns were, uh, if I was hearing right, is this gonna lead to excessive costs for taxpayers moving forward?
It's a, you are required to provide the service to them.
That I understand, I just, the, the how we are able to provide that service, I think is a question here.
Yeah.
Um, not the, you know, we're looking at the nuts and bolts, the engine's gonna run regardless, you know, it's, so, um, yeah. Um, at, with it being such a minimal cost, um, and if it's gonna make you be able to serve the taxpayers more efficiently, I am okay with this right now in, in this seat. Um, what do you got? Do you guys have anything further questions, concerns?
I think the only question I have, Tracy, um, walk me through this cuz I only saw like emails. But did you, did you go through our new county grant request policy procedure, whatever?
Well, the grant application was opened to county clerks.
Yeah.
So once we had gotten approved, then I provided all that information to the grant authority.
Yeah, but our, but our new process is, is backwards of that, where you see a grant that you want, you have to get, you have to send it in so that our finance department can check, do we have the matching funds, how long will this last, like, do we have?
There aren't matching.
I know, but that's, that's what the finance director gets to see.
I guess it's treading a fine line as an elected official also. There are some things you can um, be a part of and there's something you can.
I, I understand that, I just mean that like one of, one of the important, one of our biggest role is to make sure that county funds are spent appropriately, right?
Correct.
And that the county funds that every elected office uses to do their job, their, their job. And so my understanding, and so we have put into place for all departments, including elected officials, a process through which we, as a board and our staff, can get eyes on every grant so that we understand that, yes, it's important, it's crucial for you to do your job, you are the one who gets to apply for it, but we are the ones ultimately who are the fiduciary, who carry the fiduciary responsibility. And that's why we have the new grant process. I was just wondering if you are going, I get that this like has been in the works for a while, but it's important to me to know that you're gonna follow that procedure in the future because that's our job.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what's done and it's time for.
Yeah, I just, I, it's really crucial to me before I approve any future grants or future money for your department to make sure that we're sending it through the same process that everything in this county goes through so that we can do our job.
Yeah, and I have provided all that.
But you did it backwards.
No, it wasn't in place in December when I applied for the grant.
Is that, is that right, Candace?
Um, so it is December of this year?
I'm sorry.
December of this year, twenty-four.
Yep, twenty-four, twenty-four.
This policy, I think, got approved into July of twenty-four, sorry, I'm new to it, so.
Right, I know you haven't been here either. But in the, in the future, it's.
The previous grant, the HAVA grant, again, I, I tried to work with, the roots were responsible and, um.
I understand, and.
Yeah, it kind of fell apart.
I'm not talking about the past, I'm not really interested.
I wasn't here, Candace wasn't here. Yeah, but I'm, I'm happy that we're.
Thank you. I just really need that to happen in the future, for everybody to follow the same process. Thanks, Tracy.
Chair, if I may also interject, one of the concerns too is that while statutorily the clerk has dominion over the recorded documents, that does not give her dominion over any county-owned I T assets, which this would be. And that goes to part of some of the questions Commissioner Elsa raised about the use of the potential conflicts with that. And one of the reasons I raised that today is that if the board agrees with Laura Ritson, that she has universal domain, it is such. Um, we learned, I learned this morning that she cut off ac- ac- access to not only internal folks, but at least one external user of I County. And if that is a resource that will be transferred and, and remain under her control, um, that act, asset is essential to a lot of county operations and unanimously cutting off access, um, I think was beyond her authority over the county's I T assets. And so that is part of the concern I would share with Commissioner Elsa about conceding authority over this and not having to follow county processes and procedures and policies in relation to those assets.
In response to that, you all received a document asking you to sign a user agreement because we have no control over people having free access to ICounty.org and then leaving and those passwords never get changed, they, so I, I sent out that document saying, can you just sign this user agreement? And there are certain departments that have strict rules to do that, so I cut them off.
Well, and, and towards that point too, as everyone, um, who is subject to that request knows, uh, that agreement that was sent out was not sent to the county attorney's office for review in advance. I identified a number of issues with that agreement that may get potentially in violation of state and federal law.
And it's used to many other counties, I checked with LEDs.
I'm sorry.
Why, is it, you let this finish before we, let's try not to talk over each other, or you'll, you'll get your turn.
So, but that's why, and you know, raising those issues and also pointing out that it really isn't necessary because Lake County has policies, uh, addressing, um, access and use of I T resources and the type of information that's requested in the proposed draft of the agreement um, also includes information related to human, uh, resource, access and terminations and such that would not be privy. It's non-public information that, that the clerk's office would not be privy to. So I, you know, would be happy to prepare an appropriate agreement if it's necessary, but I think our policies, as well as the end-user agreement for I County and such, covers what she's trying to accomplish. And if she becomes aware of somebody who retains access after they've separated from the county, my recommendation was to reach out to Human Resources, to bring that to the attention of Human Resources so they can ordain with their I T folks who take care of terminating access to not just I County but to all of the other's county's internal systems. Um, so I just, my position was there were legal issues with the agreement that she presented to have signed and it's unnecessary for access to a county-owned internal assets.
There are two public computers in our office, so that anyone can come in if you.
Of course. The the impact on efficiency that I will be honest with you. I'm in I County at least half a dozen plus times a day looking for documents related to performance of my official duties as the county attorney. Having to get up from my desk every time I need to see something and come over here to her office to see if that computer is available would be an obstruction of our county operations for which.
And she could just simply decide, yep, you get her.
And I'm not gonna sign something that's gonna create legal liability for the county, I'm sorry.
So.
It could lie about.
So what, Chris, do you not have access to I County?
Nope, it was cut off.
Okay.
Not only not only for I County, but also, um, I guess it was done by name, my name, so she also cut off access through my law firm. That I had when I was the contract attorney.
Uh, Tracy, I mean, we can't.
This sounds problematic.
We can't do that. We have to have our county have access to I County.
That may can sign your agreement or they can come in and use the public computer.
This doesn't, okay, but this doesn't seem like a fight with having because our attorney hasn't been assigned something.
Well, you all, well, like, two of you signed it without any.
Because I didn't have any, I didn't have any advice from legal consultants.
I'm sold, right?
How it works, I know with no problem. It says her sign it with no problem.
And and again, none of them had the, no one had the opportunity or the advantage of having legal review the agreement,
That you have two ways.
which every other agreement in the county, including this this information that she has before you today, is vetted by the county attorney's office in advance.
Yeah, yeah.
No other contracts are signed without it coming through the county attorney's office. And that's internal contracts with employees and managers and such too.
In a nutshell, we're already bound by county policy
Yeah.
for the exact same things that the user agreement is asking us to be bound by. Why are we duplicating a user agreement, Tracy?
I don't have a user agreement.
I County does, though, and that's 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 the thing is it's a it's a county IT asset. All of the other, for example, um, we have not, no one in the information technology um operations has issued any other employees' user agreements for their access to the county-wide Microsoft suite, any of the other IT assets that we use because they're unnecessary. They're already covered by county policy and the end-user agreements, the access agreements that come with those programs. So there is no need for this additional agreement.
And I County is totally under my purview as the elected official, Chris states statute, and it's my responsibility to make sure that it's secure.
It it does not apply. There's nothing in the statute applies to electronic electronic applications like I County.
Recording, it's under the clerk and recorder's office.
You guys wanna table this?
I think we have to.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna um successfully table this for two weeks because of it it the can of worms that has been over.
We really need to move forward with this. I'm sorry, but we need a new server.
Tracy, it's. I totally agree, and I think that it's now, it's also.
And I I guess I question, you don't want to accept a hundred and fifty thousand dollars fully funded grant? Is that?
I don't think that's the issue. I think we're more concerned about the legal aspects and and cutting Chris off.
But that's a totally different issue.
But they're all co-mingled in.
No, the grant is one thing.
The issues are all co-mingled in the 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 arguments and all that stuff, somebody yelling online. This is complicated, so I know this is timely, but Chris, do you have a a legal issue with us accepting this grant?
Not the grant, the issue is with the access and the purview, the clerk's position that she has unilateral control over that asset. And that's not, if this is going to be, you know, setting this up to where I County will now be in a different different uh server that's completely under her control, that I think does create an issue for the county.
Yeah, currently, yeah, it's under my control.
Well, and that's that's something that we weren't aware of until it's a unilaterally terminated access for people.
This new server implements all those things or or, okay. I'm not saying who's right or wrong, but there's a lot of red flags that are popping up now, so it makes me wanna act cautiously and pump the brakes a little bit on this because, you know, something as simple as getting money for a server shouldn't have this much pushback.
Tracy, what happens?
The server is twelve thousand seven hundred dollars out of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant.
And you've already ordered that. What happens if we don't approve this? How do you come up with the money for that server? Because you've already ordered it.
If you hurt me?
You said you've already ordered the server?
Yes, we have to have a new server.
I think most folks don't start spending from the grant until until it's approved by the UCC.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Tracy, I want you to have a new server. I totally hear that, and I don't really understand why everything else is going on. So it makes me. Yeah, it makes me, it makes me confused and not want to move forward with something that I don't understand why all of these other things are also problematic part of clerk and recorder's office. I also wanna respect you as an elected official and know that we don't have purview over what you do. And you have a lot of power that allows us to do our job or not. And so I I wanna make sure that we're in a good place where we can move forward together, and it feels like there's too much otherness going on in here. So I definitely would um approve of tabling this.
I do have, Chris, is there any way to move forward with accepting the grant and working out the legal issues?
Yeah.
And I was gonna say, partly the way you work that out is to make sure that that the access and such, it it becomes in as a part of the county's IT asset. It's not under the the pure domain and control of the clerk and recorder's office because no other IT assets of the county are under the domain and control of one elected official or one department or something like that. And you all are the ones, you have the authority over all assets and all property and by county.
So we're not telling Tracy not to drive. We would just like to have a set of keys as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh my god, I love you that far.
That's the only way I can understand this, though, because it is so above my head. Um.
Yeah, yeah.
Tracy, is there a way to move forward with accepting the grant and and meeting terms of Chris?
Of course.
Chris's terms? You're comfortable with that, Chris?
Yes, just, uh, it, and and yes, as long as it is an understanding that this separate user agreement and such shouldn't dictate essential access to this asset or the current asset.
Can we could we reword the user agreement in a way that works for you and for you?
I I can do that if that, if you believe that's the best use of our resources to create a document that's unnecessary based on all the other assets that we have and the policies that are already in place to cover this.
I mean, if it seems important to Tracy, then yeah, it's important that we work with an elected official.
Path of least resistance. I mean, how do we just get forward with this without losing, you know, without being on the hook for stuff that's already been purchased in the future? We'll try and make sure everyone's going through the proper grant processes. We're not buying things ahead of time. And then um that we can also have access to being locked out of something that we need to do our jobs. So just like, you know, I wouldn't wanna take anything from you like this server that's not gonna inhibit your job. And same for locking people out access-wise to I County. Um, we can't really be having that moving forward because it's gonna create inefficiency which costs taxpayer dollars, which is our job to, not what happens.
So so I was just asked that that approval be conditioned on restoring county access to everyone who had it, um, who is a current employee or elected official or whoever needs that access for parts of their jobs immediately?
Well, I don't know, we don't have any, like. There's no consequence if you, if Tracy does choose to do it.
Well, but if she's agreeing that she will, if you approve her request, that she will reinstate everyone's access. And then I will work with with Clerk Ritson on an appropriate document for the users of I County.
I agree to that.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks. Okay, um, so we don't need to table this. We're going to uh put a motion to approve this, agenda item number seven. You guys like how that conversation just panned out?
I still, I think all of my hesitancies about, like, why all of this came up is still present.
Probably conversation for another time.
Yeah, so I I don't think that, Tracy, I appreciate that you're gonna make work with Chris. And I don't understand why all of that happened just now. So I think that has not really changed. I want you to have a server. We have a server. I don't understand that. So I still feel really confused about this, and I think that this would be the only time that I'd allow this, like, process to happen. But we've already talked about it, about how in the future the grant process has to be in line with our policies. In the future, you can't, we won't, like, honor purchases made before a grant is approved. Can't cut people out of do access to being able to do their jobs, like, all of that shouldn't have come up. And in the future, it it, we have to hold a harder line.
Yeah.
But I want you to have a server, you know, so.
Yeah, what's done is done. Um, moving forward, you know, we've all made agreements. We've got some solutions here.
Yeah.
I have one last question. What would happen if we didn't approve this and we try and sort through this and you have to wait two weeks for the approval? What are the consequences for your office? Significant, insignificant?
I would think so.
Two weeks? I mean, it seems like there's a lot to sort through here, and I don't wanna rehash personal beefs and all that stuff, but it seems like we're missing, like, a bunch of backstory. I don't wanna put you in a pinch. I want you to be able to do your job. So the question is, what if we wait two weeks? How 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 bad?
Again, I will remind you that the server is twelve thousand dollars, but the rest of it is digitizing, indexing, paying for the web hosting for last year and this year, the um access storage to the vendor, that's all in here. And if you don't accept that, you don't accept the grant, then that's coming out of your general fund.
Right, and it'd be foolish for us not to accept it.
For sure, for sure.
But it might be foolish for us.
So over a hundred thousand dollars coming out of your general fund instead of this grant.
It might be foolish for us to move forward without some some legal documents in place or agreements being.
The access issue is completely separate from this grant.
Maybe.
And I've already agreed, if Chris wants to create a new form, I will.
Okay.
I'm just reviewing the the grant agreement in terms of if there is a deadline for acceptance. Which I'm not seeing um in terms of for the application.
Uh, Candace, you're better at speaking the language of grants than I am. Do you see anything that indicates a hard deadline?
I didn't really get to review the documents because it didn't go through the grants process.
Just wondering.
I don't have it up right in front of me.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no worries. Just wondered.
And I I was gonna say, I didn't, I don't see anything in the documents in your packet today that provides a deadline for responding for this. It just commences upon acceptance of the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it runs through, um. So, because the grant issuance date is the date, the formal date is the date state controller and authorized delegate signs the grant letter. The grant expires, so any work under the grant needs to be completed by June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Okay. Nice. It seems like we have time for two weeks if we wanna take it. And if we know that we're gonna come to the same decision of approving it, then I thought we'd just do that now.
I would like more clarity regarding agreements and maybe a verbal agreement's not enough. Maybe a signed agreement and work it out, uh, work everything out. And then certainly we'd like to, I personally would like to get that money and have you do your job properly.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think all three of us wanna see that happen. I just wanna make sure that we're not doing anything that reduces efficiency of the county, whether it's in the clerk's office or on any other department that does end up unnecessarily costing county taxpayers time through efficiency, um, you know, employee hours, things of that nature. Um, so, yeah, let's table this.
And Chris, you can work on this?
Yeah, I'll make that priority.
Do you wanna?
Okay, um, March eighteenth is a good date to table this too. So I'm gonna make a motion to table agenda item number seven, the grant from the Electronic Recording Technology Board, the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, one hundred and eighty-nine fifty-two cents, um, until March eighteenth.
So moved.
Take that, is that?
I thought he moved. Oh, did you move? I'm sorry. They asked for a motion.
Asked for a motion.
On second.
Okay. Then, uh, do we vote on the table? Okay, uh, take that to a vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and giving us the space to thoroughly explore things that we're not super familiar with. Um, it's it's a lot and it's difficult. And, you know, it's nothing personal against anyone in the room. Sometimes we just, we need to be able to pump the brakes, make sure we're making the right decisions. So thanks, everyone, for allowing us the space to do that.
Can we take a quick break?
Um, quick reason comfort, what is it, comfort?
Comfort.
Point of comfort?
Point of.
Point of comforts, personal.
Personal.
Privilege, that's it. Thank you, Tim. A quick personal privilege break. Um, what do you guys need, five minutes, ten minutes?
Five.
Five.
Five-minute personal break, please. Thank you.
So as we're thinking about these next few agenda items, I do think uh through those things, Candace and I and others are working on updates to our financial policies, including the grant policy, which we'll talk about, I think, later this week, uh in a work session. Um, but yeah, part of that, the audit finding, right, is just not being able to um actually get the money that Lake County Government is owed, so and that and we end up floating a lot of things that we don't really need to in following like grant uh requirements and things like that as we get grants, so we're working on getting better on those, it's a it's a known error, it's something that we're um working on improving. Part of this and with the other ones is the ninety-day pause on new grants that I have directed staff to not apply for anything without express approval coming from myself, Lauren, Candace and the A C C on those grants, so that's what some of these other items are. Mainly that's coming from federal and state budgetary and policy changes, there's on-again, off-again access um for various state departments um accessing federal funds. Um, so that's part of everything we're gonna talk about today, but in relation in particular to this grant, um, this grant was um applied for in uh August of twenty twenty-four um through the Colorado Energy Office for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. That CEO received funding from the federal government through the EPA uh for that. Um, so that uh funding is an amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars to go over for three years. Um, and it is a reimbursement-type grant, so we'll submit monthly reimbursement for that, this grant is for a position at Lake County Government. Um, that would be um, you know, dedicated to sustainability, um, and then also helping work on the Climate Action Plan, which Lake County Government also has a separate grant for from the Department of Local Affairs, which is more secure funding, that comes from the Severance Grants, the EIAF funding. So the Climate Action Plan is fine, um, and we have uh the contractor in place and the work has started, begun in the Climate Action Plan. Um, you know, as we worked through this with the change in the federal administration, right, there's, you know, some grants, you know, paused, things like that. We've had two updates from Colorado Energy Office, one on saying, you know, kind of just doing, um, we're gonna do a pause, we're not gonna do things that, you know, we haven't uh um or move forward with things because we're uncomfortable, and then uh later on the twenty-seventh, you know, that they believe that they know of regained the ability to request and process the reimbursements from, oh, it's Department of Energy, not from EPA. Um, so there are a couple of things uh for the board to consider or to discuss on this, so we've worked um on a job description, it's still not um adequate for being posted, I don't believe it fill fulfills everything that we are looking for, that Lake County Government is looking for. Um, there are other options um within this grant as well, um, so it could go to towards a contractor, um, whether to help with sustainability initiatives, whether it's uh public works at the landfill, working on uh how to composting, uh working in and shop and community planning and development on building code updates, public health for environmental health, uh environmental justice, um objectives to help, um things like that, it could go to that, um, it could be a position um at Lake County Government, uh it still makes me extremely nervous, just given the changes of the federal government, um. And I also have some other options too, but for the board to discuss and ask any questions, there's some other options with vacancies that we do have and that are budgeted, that we could um potentially meet some of the objectives of the grant application from the previous board.
Okay, so this is a Swiss Army type knife grant that can fill multiple roles?
Um, well, kind of, it can go to two things, it can go to a position at Lake County Government, it can fund a position, so it would be grant-funded position. Um, you know, that would be part of the job description, so whoever applies for this knows that it's dependent on this grant. Um, it could also go towards a contractor to help with sustainability initiatives, um, so those are those are your two kind of.
For example, like um solar power offset for the courthouse renovation, something of that nature, would that even follow?
Maybe with the. It could, but some of those things, the uh efficiency and sustainability are kind of already built into the work being done with M L W architecture, um, and discussed with our uh owner's rep and the contractors for that. Talked about sustainability for for this renovation, knowing how inefficient our building is.
Um, this is a grant and poll, or do we have to match any of this?
Zero percent match.
Okay. Um, this sustainability position, how will that help locals?
Um, that's a great question, um, so part of it is, you know, working, being part of the team or the task force that is working on the Climate Action Plan. Uh, but there was never really like a clear direction from the previous board on like huge objective goals, I think there are a couple of things that came out of it, right? Like it's us like composting up the landfill further diversion from putting waste into the landfill, so there there's an opportunity. Community planning and development, um, building code changes, other things, um, public health and environment, uh how to you know, further any of our environmental work, um, that's what, you know, like our partners, like our work are doing, uh C four, things like that. Um, you can look at globally at Lake County Government, and I can also look globally at Lake County community, like how can this community be more sustainable? Um, when we look at Lake County Government, sure, like, could we um move to an all-electricity? Sure, we don't have any of the infrastructure for that, how do we do that? Um, and if you're looking globally at the community, you know, being more climate resilient, um, and planning for climate change, right, how can residents plan for that, right? As summers get hotter here and people have never had to have air conditioning or things like that, how do you help folks that way? So there's a whole host of uh ways that it could help.
Something uh came across my radar about um Excel rate hikes.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way that a sustainability director can influence Excel energy rate hikes?
Um, not particularly, the most beneficial way to influence that is through the commissioners going to the Public Utilities Commission, which is a state commission that regulates energy providers within the state, um, so talking about impact to your community um and how those rate hikes would hurt uh Lake County communities specifically.
Couldn't this couldn't this position also be doing that work?
It could, yes.
Like somebody who's actually well-informed, somebody who's a professional in the area, they could be the ones advocating for us keeping of like trying to keep up with our surrounding neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
Especially when it comes to working with Excel as an example.
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't know enough about, I don't know enough about energy to be the person who advocates to the public utilities for that. Just like having rice would be the person to work with water, advocating for water needs. I could see this position being similar to that, serving the whole community, not just Lake County Government.
So this is two forty for three years?
Mm-hmm. So I think that's salary range, I'd say fifty-five to sixty-five, about fifteen K in fringe.
But wha- what happens at the end of that three years, if we still have money left over, could we pay for that position for another year, or is that?
Um, the grant, the grant term is for three years, um, so I don't think, you know, gonna use it or lose it.
Okay.
Uh, kind of situation, um, and then, you know, for that position itself in three years, it would be up for the board to decide if you want to contribute general funds uh to keep that position. Um, but that's why it's imperative on, you know, when when we do the job, if we move forward with the job of posting and things like that, that everyone is aware and understands that.
Sure.
Um, it is a grant-funded position.
Yeah.
Right.
I'd like to know who, you know, this Climate Action Plan, like who's on the team? And uh also I'm concerned about this position going into the PROS department, which already has ten, eleven employees. Is there a place for this?
Why would this be in the PROS department?
We haven't, I haven't finalized like decisions on where it was, um, PROS has um worked on the grant application um with the former board uh on this, but I have talked with Public Works, Community Planning and Development, Public Health, uh and PROS, right, on like the best place for this. Um, and that's, and also restructuring with the team for the Climate Action Plan, for that to be the task force to drive forward the Climate Action Plan from like the county's perspective, but it is a community's plan, community-wide plan. Um, you know, there's been discussion like should it live in the manager's office, I mean, like, yes and no. Um, I don't have capacity, I don't think a future manager would have capacity to add like that, the technical work to um to their plate, um, I think there's, like, everything I've discussed with the various departments, like it could fit there, it could fit there, it could fit there, do you want like a broader global position? Um, or do we want something more more technical to show tangible uh results?
Can I ask a really silly question?
There are no silly questions.
This is gonna be a little silly.
Those are my favorite.
Uh, does it have to live in the county? Like, can we be a pass-through? It feels like C four would be a better place for this. But does it have to be in the county?
I think that would have to be a contract with C four, um, so.
Okay. And would we actually use the funds like that? Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
He could get consulting.
I'm only asking because it doesn't sound like it fits anywhere. You know, I know Emily's here, I know it's, I was like, this is gonna be awkward because she's here. Um, I, and it sounds like we don't really have a department.
I would like to add, if I may.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But it's a full-time position for three years. It seems like a stretch to work on this stuff forty hours a week, whereas somebody, somebody like you, I'll just go ahead and finish.
Yeah.
Somebody like C four can take on that work. We could help them, and then the other thing is after that grant runs out, I know the goal is to create a sustainability department within the government, but uh my vote would be to not keep adding positions to the government, we're already bursting at the seams.
Yeah.
With space, we're bursting at the seams of the budget, so I'd take any suggestions now.
Thank you, commissioners, I appreciate it, um, and I know that I was not on the agenda today, so I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, if you don't know me, I'm Emily Nicholson, the Executive Director of Climate Safety and Conservation Center. Um, we have served as a sustainability consultant for the county since our inception in two thousand thirteen. The county actually provided the seed funding to launch C four. Um, I would say that relationship has unsetted, um, we don't currently have a contract with you all to be a sustainability consultant. Um, if you truly felt that this position should not live within the county and we're considering returning the funds, I think C four would be open to a conversation with you all, but I would really advocate that it actually is time to create this role within Lake County Government, all of our surrounding communities have positions like this, if not departments, within both their cities and their county governments. Um, it is exactly the time we want to be working on these things and pushing planning forward on climate action, even though a lot of funding has unfortunately disappeared because of the changes at the federal level, our community really missed out on four years of an incredible funding opportunity because we weren't ready to take advantage, um, we didn't have plans in place, we did not know what the next steps were within our within our local government, within our community, that's why the Climate Action Plan is so important. And I would say, um, you know, having had several conversations with previous commissioners around where this position should live.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I can't say for which department would be the best one, um, but I do think it should work across the county, I think there are things to be done within planning and development, there are things to be done within PROS, within public health, within public works, because climate change is cross-cutting across every issue we face as a community. Um, hearing the talk about tourism and visiting this community this weekend, um, C four is on the front lines when we provide zero-waste services, and what we hear from people visiting our community is they're coming here because it is cooler, and so all of the issues we face as a community, they're prone to be exacerbated. Um, if we don't plan and don't take action, and so I would say this really is the time to hire this position within the county, you also, um, with grants, um, sometimes there is a lot of flexibility, and so you could create a position in one department and then realize, hey, this isn't working, we actually want it to be split between these two departments, or we want it to be in the county manager's office. Um, you really can change those things, you don't have to to commit, so I really would encourage you to move forward with this today.
Cool. Is it, would you all be okay if we heard from Jeff, since he was like the?
I was planning on it, yeah.
Okay, great.
Um, did you have anything to add to that?
I I I, yeah, well, first of all, thank you so much, and I, and as I, yes, I mean, as a, I I have to say for the record, I'm not speaking in my current capacity in the Public Utilities Commission, this is as previous commissioner, I'm just a citizen who look out for the interest of Lake County, so maybe just on that narrow question of like where it sits, I mean, I'll maybe two things come to mind, one is, I mean, you you could certainly have it as a consultant or a vendor relationship, you still need to manage consultants. You know, that does take time, so it's not, uh, I I I just would ask the question of like how much management time do you really save, and some, you know, some good picture decisions will still have to come to you all through staff, so I I I don't think it's, it always sounds good to like, oh, we'll have a consultant do it, but you, again, you still need to sort of take the time to hire and manage and absorb the information coming back at you from the consultant, and I do worry whether county staff would have the time to do that if it all comes to consultants, so maybe I'll stop there, and 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 actually, I'll say one thing, just in in my former role as commissioner, when this question was coming up, it's like, wow, yeah, like where does this kind of cross-cutting department or person sit? There's no right answer, but I asked a number of different jurisdictions who have sustainability positions, and I would say the unanimous response was it always ended up being in the county manager's office, you know, as hard as that was. That if it went, it ended up in C P D or Public Works or somewhere else, it sort of got lost.
Yeah, yeah, because it has to be for everything.
Maybe sort of stovepipe too much. Yeah, it is, it just is a cross-cutting, and again, depending on your priorities, you don't know what this person's maybe gonna work on, so you don't, I mean, I think, I think you just have to like learn this um over the three years, I don't I don't think we even know right now the best place. And so I'll stop there on that, like, the organization is another.
Sounds flexible, and this is probably the lowest rung of the ladder of importance, but where are we even gonna put a desk for this?
Well, we have, I we have office space for it, and I just wanna, because everybody keeps saying putting it in the manager's office, and I just want everyone to know that I've reached out to county managers across the state. Like, there is no one solution for it. And for just lumping it into the manager's office does not make it more effective or cross-cutting or any of those things. And in fact, most counties do not have it in their manager's office. So I just like, respect, I just I just wanna make that clear. Like, I'm not saying this work is not important. I'm not saying that it it cannot be led by the manager's office, but it is just, I mean, lumping something in because we don't know where else to put it is not a good organizational solution. Um, and it is capable in our organization to have, you know, cross-functional teams and cross-functional positions.
Question. You know how we made um the TED department last year, where it was just tourism? Well, first it was nothing.
Right.
And then we made a tourism department. And then we took Adam's position and we we changed the allocation of twenty-five percent of the position to be economic development. And now it's more like fifty-fifty, right? Is it like hearing that this is a flexible opportunity, could we put twenty-five percent into different people's positions? And request assist, I don't, could we do that?
It's no different concept. Yeah, could we, you know, fill out a couple other key positions with with that extra funding?
Sustainability list?
I don't think the grant samples about.
Think we'd have to go back. The grant doesn't allow that.
Okay, so flexible to a point, so it's, yeah.
Okay. Does not have that option on the SIFR, you know.
So the grant specifically says this is for a full-time.
Well, the observation was it's it's specifically a a capacity grant, um, staff capacity.
Right.
So, um, and like the reason that this hasn't been, like, it wasn't posted a year ago as a as a as an opportunity was we saw that this grant was available. And you can't have already posted or already hired somebody. So I assume like you can't just distribute it among current staff. Because, um, yeah, what we asked for was funding for a position for three years.
Can we get it started? And then I don't think it should be attached to a county manager position that is about to undergo a bunch of changes and probably already has a pretty full plate. But is it possible to get, um?
Sorry, I'm sorry, interrupted.
No, it's fine. Um, is it possible to get this started as kind of a standalone thing, wherever we can find a desk, a park, a space, corner, whatever? Um, and uh.
The question is what department does it?
Figure out, figure out where it's, it doesn't have to go under a department, if you're.
I think, I mean.
Yeah, because it's not a director level.
Put it in road and bridge, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Well, we can, I mean, I can, the work, I I have space for a person, for a new human. Um, but I think really like from this board, I mean, like, what are your priorities then for sustainability and climate action? Because some of the other grants, you know, that we'll talk about going down, right, like, we'll address specific things, especially like mainly thinking of agenda item number thirteen, right? Stormwater drainage management.
Mm-hmm.
Climate's changing. We've never had stormwater drainage in the county.
Right.
Should be sure. Need to work on that. So like, but like, where do you, like, what are the board's priorities for this? Because the position now is just written super high level as a generalist, which is what I've been uncomfortable with the entire time. And I need more specifics in the job description to meet the board's priorities.
Hmm.
I'm scared to lay that on you right now, but.
Well, for sure, we know that the climate action plan needs support. It should not, I don't think it should live within PRO, whatever, with our.
Yeah, I'm taking it out of there.
Great.
I'm moving that.
So that alone seems like their job in the beginning to help determine their priorities. And that that the climate action plan doesn't have its own natural home in the county either.
Is. Does Bryce's own department and is there any way we can kind of change the label of that to include something a little broader than just simply water? Or is that like way, way crazy left field and super hard?
I think that's his specialty, you know, what that position is created.
Yeah, because it was created as a water program manager. Um, but I mean, if we're thinking of like natural resource management, you know, it is spread across multiple departments. Um, you know, I mean, I think that the climate action plan will eventually end up living in CPD as they reference the plan for that along with the one community plan and the comp plan update.
Hmm.
So. You know, I mean, a-again, like, I think it it can be a cross-cutting position. It could be, you know, a sustainability, you know, coordinator, program manager. The salary isn't the the greatest, but it is a decent, it's an okay salary.
Right.
Um, yeah, I just don't know if you have um specific areas, because I can think of it like the departmental things that I've pointed out, where capacity can be useful and helpful. I had the landfill with composting.
Right.
Um, since we don't get e- external support for that, so are there other things, you know? Um, or if you're looking for a technical position, I don't know, we'll find it for that salary, but, um, you know, it can can be part, it can be a part of the CPD team. Um, can also, you know, it can help plan county-wide projects as the point of the planning department, right?
I'm having a brain stutter on CPD right now.
Community planning and development director.
Oh, sure. Um, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so I I just, one other thought, like, I just wanted to reflect on things I've heard from other jurisdictions. So I, I again, I don't know if there's like a right answer, but one thing I heard is that that undermined sustainability positions when they got put in one department versus another is when something did come up, say, say they're in CPD, but they need to talk to Public Works about something, or TED about something, or the law, you know, legislative lobbying team about something. They were seen as like being uppity and out of their lane, and they got a dig for it.
Mm-hmm.
So they sort of need, like somehow, and you sort of like send the management signal, wherever they get put, send the management signal that it's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, to talk to other departments, and that's not taking away the resources from where they sit or doing an end run around their manager. You know, because again, that's that's how other sustainability people felt undermined and unable to do their job and eventually like criticized, you know, um, in performance terms.
I can easily see that happening.
Yeah.
Um, no matter which department you put it under, unless it is the manager's department. But if, and, um, I do want to honor that we're about to have a big shift in our manager's department. And that might not be the best place for it to have, for this position to have the greatest success, to be set up for success in the first year. So what if it was, I mean, I don't know much about the county leadership team, but is that a place where this position could potentially have more voice? To make it clear that it's part of the culture of all of the departments, no matter what department it's in?
It it could definitely, uh, it could be a part of CLT, but I think, you know, to everyone's points on this, right, like, if the ma- the board and then the manager says this this is important, department directors fall in line. So that's.
Yeah. Right. No matter where it is, it is going to, even if it's not in the manager's department, it has to have the backing of the manager as.
Right.
A cross-departmental value.
Okay, which the core.
Still, uh, still something, is the one, still something?
Yeah, yeah, which the core, that core team I talked about, the Community Planning and Development, Public Works, Public Health, and Community Planning and Development, and PROS, all understand that, right? I mean, I, because I I can push these things further if we want to move forward with this position, right? Like, is it gonna impact finance? Yes, and someday it will impact finance, but that's, you know, not starting today. Um, but those are like the big fab departments that you're going to see the impact, the most immediate impacts or sustainable impacts, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to wait and see the climate action plan, and if there's lobbying efforts to be done, I'd like to suggest that the board do those. And it seems like we're gonna have a hard time implementing the 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 salary of fifty to sixty thousand. That's not enough. I mean, we're asking someone to do that full-time. So I I think it's redundant and, uh, you know, I think there's a lot of people doing this work and I think it has the potential to gum up some of the other plans. Courthouse renovations, the window replacement, adding another person to the county, you know, building. And then eventually having to, you know, decide whether we're gonna hire him or not, so those are my objections.
But those are good points, Matt. I think like the the flip side of that is when I walk around this place and see that, you know, our we're wasting money on things that would be considered sustainable initiatives, like I put a gum wrapper in my trash can and that whole bag gets taken out of the trash can and thrown away because it had one little piece of trash in it. And the bag itself is more trash than the gum wrapper that I have in there. If, and like, if, these, I know these are little things, but I think is this the kind of position that would find these things around and be like, hey, we need to change this? It would save taxpayer dollars. Even the paper towel dispenser in the men's room, you put your hand in front of it, it puts like this much paper out. And is there a setting on there that you can change it to just what you need to dry your hands? That's gonna save taxpayer dollars. I don't see us being able to afford this position after three years. So, um, that could change. I don't know. I don't have that crystal ball. But right now, we've got the the option and the opportunity to get at least three years of a paid position of someone who could potentially find ways that the county could save money through sustainability initiatives. And I'm looking at this through like a purely a fiscal lens, which might not be entirely fair, but I do see opportunities to save money through sustainability initiatives for taxpayers and for the county.
I think those are, those are good points, Commissioner, and some of those things, like, we can, we can talk with, um, the custodial team, and we can change the length of the paper towels. They they do actually pick out the trash in everybody's trash cans. They rarely take the full bag, um, out. They do sometimes when depending on where you are.
Oh, that makes me feel a lot.
Yeah, um, but you know, there are, there are some of those things that we can do, but I just, I guess I would, you know, thinking about this and debating this as we go into a time of austerity with the federal and state government, like, I I'm just having a really hard time how I can justify this to the rest of the team, or I'm already prepping directors of like where cuts will come um, when the federal and state changes happen.
Yeah.
Um, so I ju- I just.
But this also offers a, somebody a job. Like, this is, this is us having received a grant to fund somebody having a salary with benefits. So if you look at like how this can impact the taxpayers, that alone is valuable, that is valuable to somebody. And I'd also say that, like, to Jeff's point, that there are, that many, most counties have this position. Like, what we don't wanna see happen to our community, which will be a generational impact, is for us to not keep a pace with sustainability practices. And then the entire community have deferred maintenance. It's what C four works on every day. Like, we just don't have enough, we don't have enough, um, wealth in this community to like do it on our own. So I think that it's a huge, we might not see the benefit over the course of this grant, but we will see the huge consequences of us not investing in this kind of work over generations. So, and that's a hard, that's a hard thing to sell, the things that you can't see immediately. But I don't want, because of our lack of affluence, to make us fall behind even further, our surrounding counties. And this is supposed to benefit the entire community, not just the, not just the county building. And it's it's money on the table. The former commissioner has already got us. All we have to do now is determine where it goes for three years.
My my gosh, caution, cautionary thoughts there are are how it's being phrased, that budget cuts and, you know, state and federal level. If, can the carpet get yanked out from underneath of us with this one?
That's a good question.
If we agree to it and then, you know, a few months down the road, they change and then we're on the hook with the position.
They're not paying for it anymore? Yes, it is.
That is definitely a possibility, and I did just, so the board is aware, um, this is another backup plan. So I did have some, uh, staff turnover. Um, so I think there's also the ability for the county to use a already budgeted position um, for the OWTS position, which is the onsite wastewater treatment position. It is a technical job. It does the, uh, septic tank testing and then title of deed and transfer when folks with septic tanks sell their homes. However, it's not a full-time position, um, and it does tie, you know, very directly to environmental health. Um, so I do have the CPD and, uh, Public Health Directors are discussing like what the future of that position could look like as my backup plan for this position, should that funding be yanked out from under us, which I I do think is likely. I mean, we'll see the 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 two big things that I think the the board should wait for, and perhaps you wanna table this one, is about the eighteenth or maybe even until, uh, April, so March twenty-first and twenty-fifth. The twenty-first, the state will release their updated economic forecast, and then also JVC will, is it draft on the?
No, they'll just do after.
On the twenty-first. The economic forecast, okay, so you'll see the state economic forecast, but then also in March twenty-fifth is when the.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth is the federal budget, so, um.
So we can wait till doomsday to determine.
Indeed, um.
If this is, if the risk is worth it.
Yes.
The other point I was gonna make too is we fortunately do have a number of positions in the county that are grant-funded, and the folks that are hired into those positions know that they're based on that grant funding remaining.
Right, right.
So they kind of come in to lift their eyes open as to that potential risk of the funding for the position.
Yeah.
Of course, that might make it harder to attract people to those positions, but.
Yeah, I'd be, uh, curious to see what's gonna happen at the state level. I know this grant's coming from a strapped state budget. And if we go ahead and try and proceed with it, it's taking time out from staff applying for the grant, posting the job, trying to get all this, and then the grant doesn't come through. And I don't think, uh, the creation of a job is a good enough reason for me to, to, uh.
Like, to clarify it is, it is.
Well, we already, we already have.
We already have the grant.
We have, yeah, yeah, yeah.
People are up.
Well, it is.
Yeah, else?
To clarify, it is with with federal funding, which is where like a large amount of the pause has been coming from.
Well, it is.
And then going back and forth on with staff on trying to figure out the best place and biggest impact for this. So this is federal funding.
We have the check? We've got the money?
No, we, the previous board accepted it in January, I think.
But the chance is that that could get resc- rescinded.
But that was, that was our la- latest update from the energy, the Colorado Energy Office, was that they have received access back to their portal, the federal fund, the federal portal, to get to draw down that funding.
Hmm.
So, you know, they are moving forward with that. I've also talked with, uh, Chafee and Salida, their managers, because they, uh, Salida and Chafee County applied for a similar grant for a shared position between the city and the county. Um, they're also, um, getting paused at the moment. Um, they haven't moved forward with with this position, um, either. We have had just like super brief initial discussions on like, okay, well, maybe what does it look like then for a regional position? Which is harder, uh, this is a lot harder, but I just want you to know that other communities are facing these same decisions and discussions.
I have the Office of Energy.
CEO.
CEO, Colorado Energy Office?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Gave us the green light on this. That was what the, that was my impression from the email that was sent to us.
Yes, yes, and, um, I I'm just wary.
Okay. So how does he is coming from like an abundance of caution?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, and I just, I mean, I think that the administration has the votes in Congress to take these things back. And we can debate all day long about the constitutionality of prior appropriations and all that, but it's gonna at least take six months to get to the Supreme Court.
Yeah, yeah.
We can wait, we can sit and wait on it, or we can move forward, post it, hire someone, and then the grant funding stops or continues. There's, there's options there. Um, but that's the, that is where my hesitancy is coming from. And I, again, I'm not discounting the importance of this position, which is why I created like the backup with something that we already have budgeted. Um, and is a position that we, you know, need to have as we do septic transfers and de-title transfers.
Yeah.
So that can be a component of their job. Um, and then, but it would probably lend to that job being much more focused on environmental health things than broader sustainability initiatives.
Good points, Tim. Emily, did you have something to add?
Um, I, oh, the, the, um, commissioners all.
Um, I will be the um commissioners, all three of you have the contact information for the individual who's running this program at the Colorado Energy Office.
Yeah.
And they did try to attend today. They unfortunately couldn't stay for as long as we've all been here. Um, and I would really encourage you to reach out to him directly and ask some of these questions. I think he can provide you with direct clarification um on kind of the state's plan for what happens if the federal funds, if they cannot withdraw those funds. Um, my understanding was that communities that had actually already moved forward with this grant, because the grants were awarded in August of last year, um, communities that had already moved forward, the state was willing and able to fill that gap. Um, and that really like the reason we are in the room right now is because having this conversation is because our community didn't move forward with the grant as quickly as others. And so it was easy for the state to say, okay, pause in this community because you haven't moved forward. Um, but that there might be things they're willing and able to do if we do fill the position and things change on the federal level, and I would encourage you to ask the the part of the energy office those questions yourself.
Uh, but don't see any hard decisions on this agenda item, just acknowledgement of the discussion and consideration. Um, do you guys want to, would you guys like to do more fact finding
Yes.
in the upcoming week and then see when we can fit this back on
Yes.
for harder decisions?
Maybe till our the first April regular meeting, cause then the state budget will have already will have understanding about what the state is at with their budget and
Yeah.
Colorado Energy Office.
Pictures more clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's make sure the sustainability position is sustainable.
That was very clever. That was very clever. You get points for that, but we know it's not, so clever.
I make a motion to to table. Excuse sorry. What number are we on?
We're on eight. I don't know if we have to officially table. I think we're just acknowledging the discussion.
Just the discussion and consideration.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we're acknowledging, we're gonna do further research.
We're acknowledging we need to dig deeper into this. And the one last question I have is what do we have to lose right now in this instance, in the here and now by um waiting?
Um, it's just delaying for that. I mean, the reason that it was it was never like like, as I said, we did get this award in August, and it's been kind of like, well, where is this, where is the position gonna live and like doing a a description and changing the description and it hasn't been posted and then
Well, it also took a while for the energy office to get the contract due procurement done, so it was not.
And and there's that.
Now that's.
As long as just.
Yeah.
It's not just us, but I I would say probably waiting another.
We're always part of that.
So not just us.
Yeah.
We aren't gonna lose the option.
I don't think so.
Okay, that's basically all all I need to hear. Um, cool, let's uh pick this one up again after we've all gathered more information on the ins and outs and risks involved for.
Can we do it till April first?
April first, okay. Um, are we committing a hard hard decision on this April first?
No, just to put it back on the agenda by April first. I mean, we can't. It'd be great to have a hard decision as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'd like I'd like it to be a let's do this or let's not on April first.
Well, we will need we will need an official approval vote if we're gonna go ahead and sign the contract.
Yeah. Yeah, I just don't want it to be another discussion. Let's.
We're not. Yeah.
So April first, put it as a decision there?
Yeah. Well, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any any giant red flags on that, Tim?
Um, no, not from my end, and I mean, that's we work through the with the state and uh federal.
Okay.
Uh, budget changes, we'll have more information on that. And I'll continue working on the OWTS position and then the discussions with Chafee.
Okay. Any final comments from the public?
I was.
Septic systems. Go ahead.
Thank you.
I was just gonna add, you all have a work session with C four on March, the last week of March. I can't tell you exactly what day. Um, and I think it would be amazing if there's time in that work session to perhaps add time to talk about this position and the climate action plan.
Yeah.
Um, because I think that might give you security on what this role could really do.
That's awesome.
Sounds good.
That's on the twenty sixth, um, from two to three, so you guys have a dollar scheduled. Um, you possibly have somebody after you for thirty minutes, so that would help you all get some sleep about one, unless I'm.
I'll defer to the commissioners of that.
Yeah, you know our schedule better than we do. You think we can fit it in and then let it wrap?
Yeah, as long as you do that and whatever you had scheduled before in an hour, it's fine to add it to the agenda, so.
Okay. Uh, any other final comments from the public?
Jeff?
I I just offer, I'd be happy to share what I see other communities' sustainability staff capacity during in terms of getting their interests around economic development. You know, their impact of the costs of the energy transition landing in fourteen eighty's. You know, and lots of things to flow back, you know, just what they're able to do in terms of um getting their interest into a helm of life saving and utility decisions.
The more information we have, the better we can make decisions. So, you know, if if it's okay with Emily and you would like to, I would extend the invitation to join if we're gonna be talking about this position and you've researched it a bunch and are willing to dig deeper and wanna join in on that work session.
And or email us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, whatever works best for you.
I do think it would just be on the county to create time. I think we can give some of the time from C four, but part of it is a grant report that we owe you all. Um, so um, I do wanna fulfill that requirement on our end, and then also it would be on you to bring your staff that are working on the climate action plan because we have not been part of that.
Yeah, we should definitely bring our staff.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we got an extra thirty minutes. We always stay within our time time limits.
I'll email you guys. It looks like there's time to extend that work session, um, by thirty minutes to
Thank you.
Yeah.
Into four o'clock.
We'll do that anyway.
Thanks. We are definitely gonna run over today. Okay, um, anything else on that, anyone in the room, staff? Other questions from the other commissioners? Okay, cool. All right, that is acknowledged officially. Um, moving on, agenda item number nine. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Emily.
Thank you, guys.
Agenda item number nine, discussion and consideration of a grant for the preliminary design of the Lake County Public Works Facility.
Yeah, this should be pretty quick. We did do part of our work session last week on this, so I think we've been trying to had a chance to talk to Michael about it. This is the planning grant from DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs, their Energy and Mineral Impact Assistance Fund to help uh there is a fifty percent matching grant, so twenty five per twenty five thousand dollars, and then we are putting in twenty five thousand dollars to do initial planning to move the public works facilities up near um the airport. Um, and yeah, it's basically a lot of the public works facilities, you know, are from nineteen fifty five. Uh, and so trying to have better planning on that and potentially bringing other departments out there with them, I believe.
Um, this one's a little contentious, I think, because it is more um planning and it's not fully grant funded. There's twenty five thousand dollars that's gonna be coming out of the general fund for this. Um, but in my.
It'll be the public works budget.
It was budgeted.
Oh, it was budgeted, okay. Um. Where where I see public works is right now, and what they have to work with in the buildings they have to work with is pretty inadequate. And when I was coming into this position, it was all about paving roads and fixing infrastructure and trying to do that from a busted garage that, you know, doesn't have heat and, you know, we can't store vehicles properly or work on them in a good space. It seemed like as far as bad lighting, just like all the hindrances, the public works up there. I see investing in this as a way to bolster our public works to be able to come at our infrastructural needs and our paving needs and everything from a better position. I understand the concerns about, you know, spending twenty five thousand dollars to figure out how this is gonna look. Um, but it is, in my in my view, this is grant match, so we're getting two dollars for every dollar, and it's something we need to improve to be able to tackle the problems that we're facing now and in the future. So in my opinion, I think this is a good investment. But I'm, you know, opening up to you guys on where you you feel this this expenditure is.
I think it's I think it's appropriate. That property where he sits now, the junky old buildings, the brand new modular that doesn't have heat because they went with an insufficient heat, I mean, that could be a sustainable study in itself.
And great there for Jeff.
Someone study why that brand new building doesn't have any.
Heat?
So I'm all for it. I would just say, uh, maybe we can recoup some of the cost by selling some of the property or getting some housing there like Michael suggested, so. And it's not a commitment to build anything, it's just a looking towards the future, so I'm all for it.
This is part of our deferred maintenance, and if we're not working on it, we are not gonna fix it, so public works seems like the great next step for all the reasons you all already said. And I also respect that Tim has said when we don't plan, we are not diligent with our funds. So I think that regardless of how some people in the community understand planning grants, I see them as incredibly valuable.
And it also opens the door to grants to help the structure get built, which
Yeah.
the new administration might be amiable with something like that as opposed to other things, so uh.
It also helps like the integrity of our community. Like, it's kinda weird to have public works right downtown. I just think that it, oh, I know what I said was awesome, wasn't it? I just, it like, I think it helps the fabric of our of our community
Yeah.
to relocate that.
And I wonder if we could get the city to to see if we could work with the city and where they can store their equipment. I don't even know where the state city stores their equipment.
That's a great idea.
So you can use, so eight, so, oh, you're good.
Broke the street and filed out.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it's also a little bit of town.
Yeah.
I wonder if we could have a giant new garage where they could store their, snow removal and and share mechanics and uh maybe consolidate the departments.
Consolidated fleet maintenance, you need to be one more than one person wrenching on our, what, forty something vehicles?
We're not even two months in and we, here it is, folks.
All right, um, so I I'm I think we're all good for that in the interest of time. Let's just move forward.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
A motion on the table to um, are we approving a grant?
Approving, accepting, yeah.
Yeah, uh, motion on the table to approve the grant for the preliminary design for the Lake County Public Works Facility.
I'll move to approve the the consideration of a grant with Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, dang it, wrong one.
Number nine.
Number, I'm so. I have moved to approve the consideration of a grant for the preliminary design of the Lake County Public Works Facility.
I'll second.
To a vote?
Aye.
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 All right, unanimously approved. Okay, moving on, uh, agenda item number ten, discussion and consideration of a grant with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to support interpretation training for Lake County Department of Human Services, DHS staff, led by Lawrence Snyder. Go ahead, Lauren.
Yeah, so this grant is allowing, so we have a few different bilingual um um staff in DHS that work on pretty complicated things, so both child welfare cases, so trying to tell community members, family members, the legal process of being involved with a court when child welfare is also involved, or child support, which is highly technical language. Many of our folks come in, they understand basic, you know, language, write Spanish. That don't aren't trained in like that highly technical language about in Spanish, gotta translate English words into Spanish in technical languages. So um, this is training for our staff to be able to better serve our community, both child welfare and child support. Um, we probably would have said no to this, um, but there's also federal mandates coming through that the state is passing through to us requiring every bilingual provider or staff member that DHS has has to have a certification in um Spanish translation. Um, and so this is cool, this is why we're approving it moving forward, and though we have a moratorium, is because of that state mandate.
We're looking at state unfunded state mandates on the horizon, so better to get ahead of it now.
Yeah, we would have to pay for it regardless.
Yeah, and what's breakdown on the grant? Is it fully grant funded or is it?
It's fully grant funded, no match, seventy eight hundred. We have asked DHS to build, basically use the funding as quickly as possible in case it does get pulled back. So they believe that they can have it fully expended by June.
It's a no-brainer to me.
Yeah.
I would uh move to approve the grant for the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to support interpretation training at the Lake County Department of Human Services.
Seconded.
All right, to a vote?
Aye.
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 All right, unanimously approved. Moving on, agenda item number eleven, discussion and consideration of a grant with Gary Community Vendors Ventures to support Lake County DHS Economic Security Team, led by Lawrence Snyder. Go ahead, Lauren.
Yeah, so this is another DHS grant. Uh, Gary Community Ventures is a private foundation, so there is no state or federal funding with this grant. It is all publicly or privately funded through Gary Community Ventures. They are going to give us, it's a two-year grant, fifty thousand dollars per year that we can use in any way that we would like. We are gonna use it to offset uh staff uh salaries. So this actually means we save money from the general fund, and we're gonna backfill it through a a public or a private uh grant. And basically Gary is gonna come in with some technical assistance to help our economic security team better have better public um community service, to have better processes internally on processing applications. So basically, they're gonna help us do our jobs better and give us money to do it.
I can't find anything wrong with that.
Uh, and we approve this because there is no uh risk from the state or federal side of things, so.
Right.
I move to approve a consideration of a grant with Gary Community Ventures to support Lake County DHS Economic Security Team.
I'll second.
To a vote?
Aye.
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 All right. Okay, thanks, Lauren.
Now we're cooking.
Yeah.
Watch out.
Agenda item number twelve, discussion and consideration of grants to support Rocky's Rock in twenty twenty five, led by Tim Bergman.
Sure, thank you. So there are three grants that uh got caught up in the ninety day moratorium. Uh, but these grants have historically been awarded a two goal, they're no match, and they come from private foundations. They count for almost twenty percent of Rocky's Rock's budget. So one is from Excel Energy, you know, and the other two would be from Lake County Community Fund and Summit Foundation. So the community fund, our community fund, and then the summit foundation would be uh ten K each, which is what historically has been awarded. And then the one from Excel is fifteen K, um, so about thirty five K in total, but again, private foundations have historically been awarded the C goes directly to Rocky's Rock for those operations.
No risk, pays for a fifth of summer programs at Rocky's Rock. Sounds good to me.
I.
Number twelve.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I move to uh approve uh accepting the grants uh for Rocky's Rock into twenty twenty five.
Seconded.
To a vote?
Aye.
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 All right. Agenda item thirteen, discussion and consideration of a grant application for stormwater drainage management through the Natural Disaster Mitigation Enterprise in the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, led by Lawrence Snyder.
Yeah, so this grant uh we just approved late last week. I would say both community planning and development and public works are pretty excited about it. Uh, we're doing it in um collaboration with the city of Ludville. Um, it is going to address uh drainage issues in particular in the West Park subdivision. We know it's had uh historical flooding issues and uh stormwater drainage issues. It is funded through the State Department of Homeland Security. Uh, we have approved this to move forward because we think the risk is pretty low. It's funded through an enterprise fund where insurance companies pay a fee into this enterprise fund that is then given in. that is then given in grants to do mitigation efforts in communities across the state. Um, and so it's about half a million dollars, four hundred fifty-five thousand uh, to address that stormwater drainage issue in one of our uh, largest neighborhoods, so.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was, I was gonna ask maybe the same thing you were, but um, this is, this is matched or funded by insurance companies? Like homeowners insurance?
Yeah, they pay fees into an enterprise fund.
Okay.
Yeah, and so it's uh, no state dollars and no federal dollars.
So low risk, does this have like an impact on um, you know, long-term home insurance costs?
Um, yeah, they pass legislation adding these fees to insurance companies and they will pay them whether or not we get this grant or not.
Okay, so our decision in this room today isn't gonna change whether or not our constituents are paying more insurance or not.
They'll pay the, the fees and some other county will get the benefits from them if we don't.
Yeah.
Lauren, how much is the grant?
Four hundred and fifty-five thousand.
So that's not just for planning, that's for uh, action? Are they gonna do some mitigation or they're just gonna propose?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that a little bit. I, I think we're, we're imagining that a lot of that is planning, but to your point, there, there may be some in addition to that.
Mm-hmm.
At this point, what we wanna do is develop a stormwater master plan.
Mm-hmm.
And then go back again to look at once we know what that planning is and what the improvement needs to be, to go back for funding for the infrastructure improvements themselves.
Cool, and hopefully they'll look at the school and why that floods and.
It really starts above the rail yards and we all probably know and it comes down twelfth and across the road and places it's not supposed to go and it keeps going all the way down County Route Four.
Cool.
So it's in the area.
Yeah, I like it. Just, let's uh, take it up.
Yeah, sorry, um, I move to approve the consideration of a grant application for stormwater drainage management through the National Natural Disaster Mitigation Enterprise in the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management.
I'll second the motion.
To a vote?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone in the room, in the public who had any comments about the last couple of agenda items?
Good job, Ian.
Thank you. Trying to remember stuff, um, okay, that was thirteen, moving on. Agenda item number fourteen, discussion and consideration of the twenty twenty-five legislation impacting Lake County and Board participation in Colorado Counties Incorporated and the counties and commissioners acting together. That's an awful, led by Lauren.
We were going so fast and now we're gonna slow.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, so there is a number of new bills that I wanted to go over with you all and I wanted to give you updates on bills we took positions on two weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a few of them were already killed. So financial assistance for county jails, that was the bill that allowed the uh, courthouse um, renovation, the county courthouse renovation to also be put towards jails. They already killed that and sent a judiciary, um.
I don't think that had a good opportunity, what happened?
I, go ahead.
There is no money.
No money.
Oh, yeah, sure, duh.
I thought that was like one that didn't require much.
No, but I'm sure that judicial branch is very upset with it because they were going to have to share money, yeah, they want us to share money. Uh, the enforcement of federal immigration law, if you remember, this would basically reverse the law that said um, local sheriffs and law enforcement shouldn't assist sites.
Yeah.
That was already killed in State Veterans and Military Affairs. Um, our Cora bill that we're supporting is on a great trajectory, it's already in the other chamber, so um, I assume that should happen in the next few weeks and be on to the governor. Um, what else did we have? Um, our bill, our agenda bill that allows us to do a regional jail approach, should not have to maintain a jail in our community, was passed, the Senate passed the House, it is on to the governor and should be signed very soon. We might be one of the first bills to do that, so, yeah, good for us.
Nice work.
Um, and uh, Sheriff Speckton did testify on that last week and did a phenomenal job, so thanks for him to go, going down to Denver to do that. Um. Let's see, um, twelve thirty-nine, which is the Colorado Anti-Discrimination Act. This is making sure communities, uh, it's regarding losses on ADA. Um, it's looking better and I just wanted to give Chris a great shout-out, you did a great job in helping review that, making sure all of our issues are addressed, so thanks for that. Um, okay, unless you have questions about other bills, I'm gonna move on to new ones, just to, for timeliness.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, the first bill, ten ninety-six, automated permits for clean energy technology. Um, I am recommending an opposed position. Um, this is gonna require us, all counties to adopt an ordinance or a resolution that it would implement an automated residential solar permitting platform. Um, that basically would automatically um, uh, review an application for solar, residential solar, um, and that we would have to pay for that um, that platform. We could issue a fee and take five percent of that fee to pay for the platform. But given our small numbers, I doubt we're gonna have that many applications. And so the actual coverage of that platform is, it would basically drive um, costs to our community as well as being unfunded mandates and be a lot of work on CPD staff. CC four C A, the municipalities, CCAT and CCI are all opposed to this as well.
Opposed.
You all okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with opposing.
Okay, cool.
Thumbs up to the thumbs down.
Eleven twenty is the Septic System Replacement Enterprise. We're recommending a monitor, this is more of just like FYI, this could be happening. Um, CCI is opposed with the Special Districts Association, so like the water, so like water sewer special districts do support it. Uh, it creates a Septic System Replacement Enterprise, uh, which basically would have um, fees on permits for septic systems uh, would go into an enterprise, be invested, and then that money would be able to go out in grants to help people replace their septic system. Um, local governments can retain five percent of the revenue to cover their administrative costs. We would have to though administer the fee, right? The county would have to collect that fee on behalf of others, so it would be increased uh, work for CPD staff. Um, however, if you look at it the other way, right, that helps people who otherwise couldn't afford it potentially have a shot at getting support and replacing their septic system.
Yep.
So, um, again, CCI opposes, special districts support. Uh, let's see.
Monitor.
I would say monitor too, sounds like more fees and more redistribution. Uh, I'd be, I'd, I'd defer to CCI, I think, you know, more fees is the last thing we need, uh, especially when you're building a new house or. I don't know, I can see the other argument too, I'd, I'd. I'd say monitor.
Um, so eleven sixty-two is the next one, it's eligibility for just redetermination for Medicaid members.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I am recommending a support, a high support. Basically, everyone is registered as support, I don't see anyone not supporting this, but um, it basically uh, requires the State Department to seek a federal authorization to allow um, the state, HICPAF, to determine a member's eligibility for a re-enrollment. Um, without, basically for um, without checking federally-approved economic data resources or requesting additional information. So if they have um, SSI, so social security income, or other source of a stable income or assets. So that stable income or assets is gonna be determined by the state. But usually what we have to do um, locally is we have a bunch of, they're gonna report their income and then we have to verify and re-verify and get multiple sources of this. This is gonna clean that up so that if they provide their SSI and, or they provide their income or paycheck, cool, that's it, you're good, let's move forward.
Does this take some of the workload off our DHS department then? It sounds like, yes, support a thousand, ten thousand.
Yes. And then. Better access to Medicaid benefits.
Okay.
Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I took eleven sixty-nine, it was on your bill, the Housing Developments on Faith and Educational Land. People are all over the map on this bill and I haven't had a chance to have a deep dive conversation with CPD. I don't even know if it's totally gonna affect us uh, that much. So I'd like to bring this back in two weeks or to do an email chain once I've talked to CPD.
Okay.
It's, everyone's everywhere on it.
Well, it's probably getting heavily amended, right? Because the housing, well, the housing advocates are like, it's not good the way it is now when it comes to all sorts of things, but it's gonna be heavily amended anyway, so we're not supposed to wait.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Um, eleven eighty-two, risk model use in property insurance policies. I'm recommending a support, um, uh, CCAT supports, Boulder County and others support. It's trying to bring greater transparency into how insurance companies um, underwrite homeowner property insurance. Um, basically, if you are an insurer who uses a wildfire risk model or catastrophe model, um, it's trying to streamline and bring transparency into how you create those models and then making you report to the commissioner of insurance and to property owners about how that is determined.
Mm-hmm.
So, for instance, if you have a, um, making sure some certain factors are included. So, for instance, wildfire model, making sure that if a property has um, mitigation efforts for a defenseable space or you're having building hardening measures, et cetera, those types of things are included in that risk model so that people who try their best to mitigate wildfire are getting bonus points, right, more or less, and having their premiums lowered if they're trying to create a, a better space and defend against wildfires. So, I see it as a transparency bill, um, and recommend a support given our community.
Is there any concern about insurance companies raising their overall prices to pay for the extra reporting that they're gonna have to do? I mean, they're gonna say yes or no regardless, now they're just gonna have to say why they're gonna say yes or no. And that's gonna involve a bunch of paperwork or, you know, um, costs for them. Are they gonna pass that directly onto the end user?
Yeah.
I don't know the DOI regulations as well, we should, but I doubt the commissioner is allowing them to
Doesn't have to understand.
put reporting requirements into their formulas or.
Yeah.
It would be unfunded mandate for them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Which is, that sounds great, I, I'm skeptical.
Yeah.
It's a very slippery slope, you look at California, they're pulling out because of all the overregulation. So I don't know.
But that's, but that's probably part of why this is a free as for, to not go down that path with California, to have more transparency in what they're charging.
Um, because there are different models that some are developing in California, but the next stop will be Colorado. And so, I mean, it's here, we have, and I have heard of many people who cannot get probably insurance right now.
Yeah.
Yes, especially on our west side.
Yeah.
Well, Heather Lynn just talked about it, that, do you remember that, um? Oh, what was the name of that?
Heavier Commission.
Which commission?
Planning.
Planning Commission, at the Planning Commission, she was talking about how difficult it is for certain people to get insurance. And what this does is it says you can, you get to see why you were rejected or you get to see why yours is so high compared to your neighbor's, which is valuable of, cause I definitely remember when we got our house on West Third Street, we could not get insurance from our regular home insurance provider, cause they were saying that we were at risk for, you know, grass fire. And it's like, well, you can't, nobody, everybody else has insurance and we aren't at risk. So this would be, this would make them say, oh, no, we have to provide you insurance because it's not the same risk as what we're using our formula to predict.
What do you think, Chris?
I, no, I agree, I, I, I would suggest continuing and it is recommended to support um, this just because I think whatever the legislature can do to help stem the tide of projections and exorbitant, you know, policy increases and stuff like that, I think we should support that because it is a real-world thing here in our county.
Okay.
Yeah, comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, the next one is hospital eleven ninety-eight, the Regional Planning Roundtable Commission. Um, CCI opposes, many municipalities oppose, many counties are either monitor or oppose. It creates a Regional Planning Roundtable Commission that's supposed to assist local governments in complying with uh, housing, land use and other planning statutory requirements. Um, long story short, I think a lot of counties are like, why do we need a commission telling us how to do our jobs? This is a waste of money.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe make the regulatory statutory requirements easier or more streamlined instead of having to create another entity to interpret state law.
Mm-hmm.
How come we don't have a, a pose on this?
Um, I was just like, you could, I was recommending maybe to oppose or monitor.
I, I would suggest, I would suggest that we'd, this was.
Elsa.
I'm surprised you ever heard that.
I'm surprised I could see as potential benefit and I think we're through the, the current version, but, you know, I'd be curious to know if the ones that are opposing are the ones in the larger communities probably because I can see this as potentially being beneficial for rural areas like ours. Um, so my suggestion maybe would be to, to monitor it, to see how it's fleshing out in that regard. Um, to see, because I can see where like, whether it's a different county and stuff like that, oh, we don't need this and stuff like that. But for, one of the concerns I have is a lot of this stuff that comes to be a burden on our more rural counties and there's often strength in numbers to have, to be able to buy that feedback to this type of entity for them to be able to advocate on behalf of.
Would it be through DOLM? Is it through DOLM?
That's what I was trying to do. And I'd be like, so, yeah, yeah, so, so that there would be maybe potential for advocacy on behalf of, it, it depends too on how they kind of read, I mean.
Whether they continue funding the planning capacity or if they have to, whether they do, they do.
Yes.
I mean, we already have the advocacy avenues, so I don't understand why we need another one.
Almost sounds like a monitor or even amend, it's like if they changed it to be like below population per square mile numbers or, you know, like it's just another thing, it sounds like they're trying to paint every county in Colorado with one color brush.
So you're just always as, without a position for a couple of weeks and kind of see where it's trending towards and.
You know, too diverse. Is it monitor not really taking a position?
Well, yeah, I mean, and I was just gonna say, just, just a fan for those watching.
I can monitor and just say, keep her close your eye, another thing that you know, in two weeks how, how it's fleshing out.
Whatever, yeah, whatever you guys think is best on that one, it's, the intricacies of the differences between the monitor or trying, or, I don't know.
Quote, so the next one is hospital eleven ninety-nine, property tax payment schedule. Um, I think our treasurer would be very upset if I didn't express his um, distaste of this bill. Sent me a very struggling worded email, um.
Sorry, that was my fault, I asked him.
No, I did too.
I was like, it's on our list, what do you think?
I did too.
Okay.
Um, so CCI and many other counties are all opposed to the bill. Uh, it basically um, requires the treasurer to send bills for property tax at a different schedule and more frequently um, than he currently does. The software, right, you get that bill, it's hard, it's a lot, so if you can, especially for our seniors, if you can break it up a little bit, maybe it's easier for people to um, save for it or et cetera. Um, his opinion from the treasurer's perspective is it creates more work for his office um, with two more deadlines added, so it would be quarterly instead of biannually and that his software would have to be updated, which would drive a cost to the county to do all of that. Uh, so overall, more work, he might need more staff and more updates to uh, his software.
We can't afford that.
So my recommendation is an oppose, okay.
It also slows the final cost, the final tax getting to its entities, cause it goes through us, all the mills go through us and then has to get dispersed to like the hospital, et cetera, et cetera. So the last deadline on this bill is September, which means that those taxing districts wouldn't get their final payment until. So the last deadline on this bill is September, which means that those taxing districts wouldn't get their final payment until the third quarter. So it it doesn't only affect the county, it also affects all of those taxing districts. Yeah, all right, I'm opposed, yeah.
I think so much better than this one from two weeks ago, I'm very proud of you guys. Okay, hospital twelve fifteen, redistribution of lottery fund, I'm recommending a support in particular for gold.
Yes.
Um, right now, there's money from the lottery fund to go to a number of different entities. They are redistributing how that money gets allocated in this bill um that I think will benefit the work that PROS does.
Mm-hmm.
Increasing the amount of money that goes towards outdoor equity um and the programs that a lot of our uh our department is relying on. Uh, so in particular, I think this has um an impact for for us, so I recommend a support and a higher level support too.
Increases it by like ten percent, right? Yeah, that is awesome.
Think of again.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, twelve thirty-four, utility consumer protection, um, CML, so sorry, uh, the Colorado Municipal League and other municipalities are opposed to this bill. Most others are monitor or opposed. My suggestion is a monitor position. Again, it's trying to create some transparency and protections for consumers um while being some uh requirements on utilities, both electric and gas, public utilities. Um, so one, it, there's current state law that has um says when a public utility can or cannot shut off gas or electric to a a consumer. This extends that uh for um a few different reasons. One is you cannot uh disconnect a utility service for non-payment during periods of extreme heat or cold during the months of October through May. If the air quality index measure is over a hundred and if the customer has a medical emergency and has a, you know, certificate saying so. Um, there's bull signs to every bill, right? Um, for our folks, not having utilities when you can't pay when it's negative fifty here would help a lot of people. However, does that increase rates for everyone when utilities can't gather payment or shut off uh services uh when non-payment is happening? So I'm recommending a monitor, but I don't know where the block would be on something like this.
Probably just monitor, in my opinion.
Yep.
Okay. I'm almost done, um, twelve thirty-seven, soft closing of alcohol beverage establishments. Uh, I'm recommending oppose or monitor, um, a lot of municipalities and counties and in particular law enforcement are all opposed to the bill. Basically allows bars to stay open later. Um, and it does allow local communities to basically draw that back so we can keep it at where we're at right now, but the default would be to move back till three. Um, I don't know the utility for our local bars and restaurants from an economic development situation to allow people to drink later, um, especially since our community has big issues with substance use and domestic violence. My recommended, yeah, would be on a pose or monitor.
Nothing good happened in those hours.
Nothing, exactly. Eleven.
Exactly.
Just trouble.
Um, it's not my job to babysit people though, so I would, I mean, as much as I'm against this, yeah, I would say that'd be a monitor. Yeah.
Our sheriff's offices and, you know, the, the.
Sees office, yeah.
Well, yeah, but have we heard from Keith in terms of there?
I've sent things to him, I can't hear about it, yeah. Okay. Okay.
You know, there's, there's certain counties that might need that, I don't know, it's just, it seems like a lot, a lot of big brother kinda.
Yeah. The only thing I would say is that I'd love to hear from you, because one of the issues we've had is when there is short staffing in the city, it falls to the sheriff's office.
I wouldn't recommend it for here by any means, but I think it's a statewide rule, again, you know, I'm, I'm kinda.
Yeah.
We already have a rule. Like, why change it is also the question, why not abolish it?
I can't put,
It just seems like silly.
I can't put myself into the seat of every other county and tell them how to run their stuff.
Yeah.
It might be some of that.
Who, do you know who's supporting it?
Oh, I don't know, I can't answer this.
National Bartenders Association?
Yeah.
I can tell you, I did not enjoy serving people after serving hours.
National Bart. Oh, no, all right, but there, there might be some people out there who need that extra hour of tips in their pocket, you know, I don't know, I, so I'd, I'd say monitor.
I put this on here mainly because if it does pass, you all might need to run in, you know, the ordinance or something to change it, so. Um, okay, last, what was, what was the last one? Um, twelve seventy-one, this is federal benefits for youth in foster care. Um, CCI and many other counties are strongly opposed to this bill. Um, basically, the Department of Human Services, when we take a child into custody, we are required to apply for uh social security benefits for them. We use that money to pay for their foster care placement or their residential um placement. Um, if they need like extra medical care, et cetera, we can use that funding for them also. This bill would uh make us apply, but make us use that funding to put into a trust for that child so that those social security benefits accrue in that account so that when they turn eighteen, they age out of the foster care system, they would have that money. So the side being that is a child's income by virtue of their disability, et cetera, that they should keep. Um, however, the other side is they are in our custody. Most people use social security benefits when they have a disability to pay for treatment or to pay for housing, et cetera. And so, um, it would impact our county's ability to pay for a child in foster care placement if we took away that money that we currently use, hence why most counties are opposed.
And given an eighteen-year-old a couple thousand bucks, is that, is that what they would do?
Yes.
It's disastrous.
Well, some could think when they age out of the system, they may not have anywhere to go
Oh, I see.
They're no resources.
in MBC money for them to get an apartment or something like that, that they would never have, otherwise might not have the resources to do.
Oh, I see.
So they don't end up homeless, because we, you know, give a lot of, especially, maybe, I don't know about here, but in especially bigger areas, a lot of homeless teens who age out of foster care.
I listened to a lot of back and forth on this one, and it was so sad.
Mm-hmm.
Talking about foster care is not a happy thing at all. And considering that like kids with disabilities would have to pay their way is also pretty messed up. So I think values-wise, I understand where this is going. When it comes to like the, the unfunded mandate that it puts on counties to be able to serve those kids, that's where I fully understand that we are opposed and why many are. And I wish, I wish this could help solve the burdens that foster care kids have and I don't, I, I, anyway, the whole point is, I wanna say that I'm opposed. I appreciate Laura's perspective from DHS. And I also appreciate all the foster parents and kids who have been in foster care for whom this would really be helpful. I would, I'd like, I'm looking forward to a different way to help solve this.
Okay, I like that.
Okay, last one, uh, twelve seventy-nine is the state level data for the Colorado Works program. The major Colorado Works is also known as TANF, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. Is our lowest income individuals that we give cash assistance to on a monthly basis. It's a federal program that the state then passes on to the counties to administer. Um, this is just trying to streamline the data that we report to the State Department regarding that program. Um, we did have DHS um review it and they said more or less this actually would help them uh since the state is all over the map on what we should or shouldn't report to them.
Mm-hmm.
And so this actually would streamline that data process, so I would say either monitor or support.
Yeah.
Yeah, support.
Okay. Um, great, um, I wanted to just do a quick check-in on something else. CCI meets Fridays, CCAT also meets, and CC four CA also meets. Um, I don't, there's a lot of bills that are talked about there that we do not talk about because I assumed you all didn't want to stay in here for three more hours to talk about every single bill that could impact a county. Um, if you want to, we can, but I didn't think that was what the board wanted. So I know a few of you have been interested in joining the CCI meetings or the CCAT meetings. Um, I just wanted to have the discussion, is there an interest in the board to delegate a commissioner who goes to those meetings to vote on the bills, even if we have not voted on that as a board? However, we would only as a board be able to testify or lobby on a vote, on a bill if we ourselves have taken a position. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
As a county, I mean.
I, because right now how it stands, you all would not be able to vote at CCI or CCAT or CC four CA on any bill
As a board.
if you as a board have not discussed it, um, so.
I've been sitting in the meetings and only, only voting when it's on, one of the bills on here that we've discussed about, yeah.
Just.
I testified one time as an individual commissioner, not as a board.
Do you all feel comfortable with that? Like your own process?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, right now, I'm, to add more onto what I'm, my bandwidth is pretty maxed. Um, but I'm willing to step up and do more, it's just gonna slow down my learning curve for what I'm already trying to figure out. But I don't know, like, are you asking one of us to start attending all the CCI meetings?
No, just if one of you do, Elsa, Kusner also joins often and I just know we are limited as Lake County in engaging in those meetings because I don't want to waste your time by going over fifty bills every two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have to designate someone in order to vote.
So if she's not there, or one of you are not there, then Tim or I know you're a proxy.
Yeah. We'll be mad. But if there is a vote on something that you haven't discussed in the regular meeting, then we'll give it back to the board and
Yeah.
have that discussion then.
For testifying.
That, for testifying and just, yeah, right, yeah.
Not for both. Yeah. Yeah.
Or if you want, yeah, if you want Elizabeth to make a different decision.
I can make that more part of my, since I've been going anyway, I would want to be more participatory in those meetings. And I'm happy to come back to the board and like as part of my updates.
All of them, yes.
Every Friday, Thursday.
Every week.
All day.
Well, two days.
All day, well, not all day, sometimes they're just committee meetings. Um, it depends on if it's CCAT or CCI. CCAT does more committee meetings and CCI does those like all day.
Do they have like briefs or memos they send out that kind of sort of like the?
No, you have to look at every single one here. You have to look at every single bill every day. And I enjoy, I'm enjoying doing that, but if you, but if we want to take turns or something, we have to.
I will delegate every, I will, I will support every amount of that responsibility you want to take on.
I can also.
But I don't want to force any of you to do more than, you know, if you're feeling any way at all like I am like, you know.
No, I, I love doing it and I can, but for like transparency, I can also keep track of what I've voted on, what I voted yes on, what I voted no on, what I abstained from.
Yeah.
And then you all can also have like a, you can keep track of how I'm showing up for the county.
I would just, to be clear, you cannot vote until we've discussed that, so I'm, I'm doing it.
No.
No, that's, that's what we're talking about now.
No, that's what's happening now.
Oh.
So we, so when I go, I can't vote on anything unless it's on this list, but there are like a hundred bills.
Yeah.
And so what we're talking about is me being able to vote on any of them. And then what, what we can't do is to like uh testify on behalf of the county unless we've all discussed it as a board.
But your vote represents our vote after we have this.
Yeah, it represents the counties.
After we go through this, yeah, yeah. Which I'm, oh, eh, okay, was that right?
No, 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 here, here's a second, so CCI has, and CCAT,
But then, the point is that.
They have these long meetings where CCI and CCAT go and they represent the position of the counties who are represented. And so both of those advocacy groups have different levels of uh agreement, like, it has to, what is it, like sixty percent for CCI?
Yeah.
And it's everybody but two for CCAT.
Mm-hmm.
So they have us voting on these big legislative days on all of the, on all of the bills. And right now, as it stands, we cannot represent Lake County on any of those bills unless we've talked about it here. What, what Warren is asking is can one of us or, or a proxy represent Lake County to vote on all of those bills? That's the change. And that's what I'm saying, if, if it, if it were anybody, I think the process should be that we keep track of what we're voting yes for versus no.
Mm-hmm.
And then making sure that's available to all of the commissioners.
Being able to vote on stuff we haven't discussed.
Yes.
Okay, that's the change.
That's the change.
Just if CCI and CCAT.
Just if.
Yeah, not.
See if it's on Lake County obvious or to register publicly in support or opposition or to testify, all of that would have to go through the board still.
I'm okay with that, it's, you know, CCI and CCAT all day, especially if, you know, we can be updated on how things went or find.
I don't know, there's some real content, sorry to interrupt you. Real contentious items that I'm sure you would vote one way and I would not, I would vote the other way, so.
For sure.
I don't, I don't think, I don't, I don't think so, I mean.
Well, the other option is that, like, we have to attend those and be able to discuss together and then decide how Lake County is gonna vote.
Mm-hmm.
So.
We can't pre-discuss them?
We could, we can, for sure.
We can, yeah, we have another.
This is the time here.
Could you uh just commit to only voting on the ones that we've discussed?
That's how we, we already, you know, already are set up.
That's what it already is. Because, and I'm sitting through, I'm sitting through lots of bills that are close.
Yeah.
And CCI is a very conservative um entity. So it's like the margins are really tight on things that could benefit our community versus not, depending on who's in the room.
Yeah.
So I think, I think that if we, I think that my request is that I am already going to these things, I'm committing my time, I'm doing the research on the bills. If either of you would like to also be part of it, like, I want Lake County to be participating. So if you all have opinions on which bills we should be voting against or for, like, I, we need to have the discussion in this room
Yeah, I agree with that.
if we're gonna go a different way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that would require a lot of, a lot more time
Mm-hmm.
spent on legislation from both or either of you.
Yeah. Um, our current regular meetings, normally three hours. We can add two hours onto those to do our job.
Mm-hmm. It's a lot, for sure.
Well, we can do the research outside of the meetings.
Right, and then do the discussion in the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. It might, it might add two hours still because there are hundreds of thousands of bills.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Hundreds of thousands or hundreds of?
There are thousands, we're, we're literally talking about one one, we're in, we're into the fourteen hun, the eleven hundred and forties. I'm not saying I'm reading all of them for sure, I'm just saying there are thousands of bills out there.
We need like a close notes cheat sheet for like, okay, this one doesn't affect us, this one does, this one does, but there's no way to get there without reading through, reading all of them now.
And CCI looks, CCI looks at bills that are like every law enforcement bill. And it's right, we have the sheriff's office, so we're wanting to vote on like, is this a felony, is this not a felony? We vote on those types of bills that I don't bring before you because I assume you don't want to talk about that, but I can. Um, but CCI does engage in all of those.
Mm-hmm. Just, but my concern is being less first and what does and doesn't. You know, the highest best use of time, kind of like what affects us, what doesn't. Um, I guess there's no way to get good at it unless you just dive in, yeah.
We just do.
And my concern would be Elsa would vote, you know, some way that I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't know until after the fact, so.
For sure.
If there's a way we could talk about this more and make a better plan or, or talk about it, share the, the bills and do an email?
Well, CCI, CCI sends out an email that has all of the bills that they're gonna talk about.
Sure, sure, so could I?
So.
We uh send that to Tim or just, I just don't want to vote and have my. We uh send that to Tim or or just send, I just don't want you to vote and have my name on it, someone, myself, say, hey, your county's supporting this.
Mm hmm.
I think we, we all just need to dedicate two hours per week to reviewing the new legislation that's being put forth and.
And then would you be obligated to take our direction?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't, if you all vote if if we vote as a board of a direction that I don't like, I cannot vote
Mm hmm.
the way I want versus the way the board has decided.
Yeah. Yeah, as long as there's controls, you know, if we can find a way to make sure we are voting as a board, you know.
Yeah, let's talk about this a little more, um, I think there's some other really cool options we could maybe wrap into this, like we have our um office hours. You know, maybe that's the time where we're sitting in our office going over stuff and if someone happens to come in to say hi and you know, whatever, but like it's a way we can kill two birds upon stone, right?
I think it's up to you all to decide how you're gonna spend your time.
Fair enough.
I'm currently right now spending my time reading over the legislation and trying to engage with it.
Okay.
So, so yes, we can talk about that, but we need somebody at CCI and if it's a staff person.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, but we need to be able to give somebody proxy to show up.
No, I like, I think it should be you. I really do. Staff is busy enough and you like it, eh, yeah.
I love it, and if you all, if you are willing to do the work to determine, to like have the discussions here.
Mm hmm.
I will, you know, absolutely represent it.
Yeah, boy. I'll just have a lot of questions for you because I'm really new to all the legislation stuff, it's totally different.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got great staff and we've got a lobbyist.
Um, yeah, okay.
Lots of resources.
I just need the links of like, where am I looking at, you know, how am I, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, just, you know, where do I even find this stuff?
Okay.
Okay. What we discussed in this room is about the extent of my knowledge, uh.
Yes.
I'm ready.
Okay, so we'll talk about it, we'll, we'll talk about the actual process next time.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that sound good?
Yeah, we need a voice at CCI.
Yeah.
Great, and then we can, the way I was gonna propose to do it with staff is like when I, like I won't be here next week and CCI is having its legislative briefing.
Hmm, yeah.
So I was gonna write up, um my inclinations and proposed amendments to each one of the bills that I'd want us to be able to have a voice at.
Mm hmm.
So I was gonna brief staff with that when I was proxy.
Okay.
Um, anyway, that's what I I wouldn't, I wouldn't like commit to doing that every time because then that's like me doubling my work.
Yeah. Mm hmm.
Yeah.
But if you all go through the, the memo that CCI sends out, you know, like these are the ones that I really wanna talk about
Okay.
the three of us together, that would be, I think that would be great.
Mm hmm. Okay. And we don't have to go through twelve hundred and seventy nine things every session, is that how that works?
No, it'll just be new bills that are introduced.
Yeah.
Hmm.
So it'll be, it's usually around thirty plus each week.
Oh, okay.
The bulk of them have been finished.
There, the beginning it was a lot and now we're whittling it down because few are being introduced or amended.
Yeah.
Okay, I was thinking we're gonna have to go through about a thousand and something of these things.
You can do three. No, no, no.
It's like, alright, like.
It's just around. Well, and then there are these subcommittees where you're actually talking about, you know, each bill is broken down into different departments. And so there are subcommittees where you talk about the specific bills for that department and you have, there's more of a discussion and you can hear what people are thinking to better take a position also, so you know, you could, if you, if you were the certain department you're really interested in, like law enforcement, you could really listen to those and participate in the subcommittees.
Yeah. Hmm. The finer points will, will get sorted and educated ourselves on here.
Yeah. Do I need to make a motion to appoint Elsa as our designated? Or is it?
Well, do you wanna wait until next time so that we can make sure that the process has gone through?
Okay, yeah.
So I'm not voting before we've been able to talk about this.
Okay. Right.
Yeah.
Cool.
Can I just clarify, so are you all wanting to schedule like a meeting each week to go through these or are you all gonna email and figure it out?
Yeah.
We'll do them on our own and then collab, find, maybe find a brief time to collaborate, you know, like at the end of a work session or something like that, like, or an email chain, I don't know.
I think we can email chain.
No.
Remind.
We can email to, uh, yeah.
You can email the staff.
Uh. Law?
Maybe it is worth adding to your week, adding on a work session to the agenda pages.
Weekly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that adding onto our Wednesdays?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah, do it on Wednesdays.
Whatever day we turn, yeah.
How long do you think, hour?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes?
Thirty minute Wednesday.
Like thirty days because we're legally quick, uh, getting new bills that'll drop, cause it
Yeah.
Once the long bill drops, then I mean things will pick up speed again and then when you have about like a week or three days left of a work session, a bunch of other bills will drop, so you're in a wall right now.
Right.
And we are only talking about another short period of time.
Right, it's a seasonal.
May eighth. May tenth.
Second Wednesday of May.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a bunch of work until May tenth and then nothing until next year.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah.
It's like a quarterly or
It's just during the legislative session.
place a year, once a year.
Yeah.
They are lawmakers.
Yeah, okay.
They make laws, they make lots and lots of laws.
I wanna, I wanna propose things, okay, nevermind.
Something you can do in the downtime is perform some crafting laws.
Yes. Okay, um, cool. Well, uh.
Cool, we'll talk about it next.
Figure out what about that coming up here. Wednesdays it is. Um, does that wrap up agenda item fourteen?
Yeah.
Alright. Uh, number, agenda item fifteen, discussion regarding the communications plan for a pause on the housing town hall, led by Sammy.
Hi.
Hello, again.
So down there.
Been waiting back there patiently for hours.
So how can we respond? Um, well, you guys saw the press release, um, addressing finding alternative methods to the housing town hall by the end of the month. So, um, and it mentions mentions more details on upcoming vacant opportunities to be shared soon. Um, do you guys have any preferences or uh ideas of how you wanna move forward with engaging with people? There's, um the online feedback portal or form that'll go on the new housing website page. Um, you can do office hours, virtual, in person. Um, roundtable discussions, and you guys talked about that, engaging with the concerned citizens of Lake County. Um I mean, give you a list of twenty creative ideas, but what do you guys wanna move forward with?
How much, how much staff would it take for us to do small group interactions in this room after working hours?
Huh?
For a town hall or? Not a town hall, just like small, smaller groups.
Um, I, I think it depended on the goals, right, of having those for smaller groups or, you know, who you want, that kinda stuff, um.
With the topics.
Well, yeah, the topics and then, you know, respecting staff's time for the evening meetings, but we, we can make those things happen, but um I guess, yeah, what, what topics are you?
How's it? Yeah, depends on, depends on the.
Cause if it needed to be posted publicly, you have to give a, a topic, you have to tell them what topic it would be discussed.
Okay. Uh, my thought is would it be proven to, um uh, I don't know.
You know, you'd like this.
The whole town hall, like just how do we, you know, let people, A, we wanna talk to you guys about this? How many people do we need in the room, you know, someone to run the technical stuff and I think that's it.
What, or maybe if you wanna do, it's painful, sorry Jackie, but um I mean, one on ones with constituents, but again, I mean, what the goal of those meetings, right, having that technical expertise to help provide answers and that, but, um you know it's a repeat of anxiety doubt, I, you know, but we could, I mean, happy to, uh, think through those, what makes the most sense.
Yeah.
Uh.
What are we trying, what's the problem we're trying to solve?
I think. What I'm, what I'm wondering is if this could be a uh solution to our not following through on holding
Go ahead.
work sessions or any meetings after work hours, which we, all three of us agreed to that when we were running, I think.
Yeah, I see, I wanna do town halls.
And, and, um, but instead of a twelve thousand dollar town hall we can let different people line up or tr, approach us, like, hey, we wanna talk to you guys about, you know, moving the starting line of the race series. Um, and, you know, okay, cool, we need a month to find a evening that we can get some staff together. How bare bones can we do that, so it's, you know, a, a fraction of what a town hall costs and, you know, things of that nature, is what I'm wondering.
We could, why did the town hall cost twelve thousand? Cause we're bringing the consultants?
Yeah, okay.
Um, I mean, well, I think, I mean, you know, so part of it too is we want for the board to determine what you want your town hall cadence to be. Whether it be monthly, gotta commit, every, whatever it is booked, like, you guys gotta commit.
Yeah.
Quarterly, two month, I don't know, five, anyway, so figure out your cadence for that. It can be, you know, a Dropbox that you wanna put up by your door or, hey, I heard this in a community conversation, wha- whatever, right? However, you guys wanna come up with, uh, those town hall topics, but I think as long as, you know, if staff at least have, you know, at least two weeks preferably more, but like time and notice of like, okay, this evening from six to eight, we're gonna be talking about whatever it is, um you know, we can make those happen and it's really the cost will be just, you know, staff time, um, cause we can always, we can always move, you know, room at, um CMC, uh, whether going upstairs as well, old church. Um, you do, we are working on the cadence for the regular quarterly city-county work sessions. Um, so you'll have that opportunity as well.
I like quarterly, a quarterly small room, you know.
You, when you say smaller, one of the issues is you can't, you can't restrict a public meeting to a small room.
Yeah, that's.
So you have to, it has to be open to the public.
But isn't that what we do, I mean, so I'm talking like this is a small room.
Right.
Oh, small room, yeah, but, but.
But you can host it here for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh.
But in terms of if you're gonna end up, if it's a, an item that you know from feedback you're getting already, it's going to attract a lot of attention.
Like a heartbeat people count.
We should have a bigger space.
I know, yeah, so it's like gonna be difficult to just.
I wonder if we could just couple the city council meetings with the group meeting, cause those are in the evening. If there's something on the agenda that people are really concerned with and they could show up to that evening, would that satisfy that?
The quarterly city-county ones or the?
Yeah, but just like in the evening at the, at the city. In their, in their building and then we could be there. I don't know, the other thing is having consultants there and then they're gonna charge us for that time.
But I mean, it's right, like topic dependent as well, like when we were talking about the housing town hall, it made sense having like the Harrison planners and all of those folks there and stuff like that. If you wanna talk about housing at ten two, like, it's gonna be staff time.
Yeah.
Right, no matter how many times or fact sheets we create or talk about the budget, like you know, but happy to create and provide that information to be educational and to support the board and engage with the community, which is what, uh, I'm hoping for.
I like your idea, I think we, in fairness, we'd wanna ask the city if they were okay with us. You know, there are public meetings already, the city-county joint work sessions.
Hmm.
Can we do, is there a way we're allowed to just advertise that, it's kinda like as a public can come and engage?
But already, I think it would depend on the topics though, and if it's a, a topic of mutual interest with the city as well.
And, yes. Well, yeah. Cause that, the, the initial structure, the draft structure would be that the board chooses one agenda item, city council chooses one agenda item. Start the meeting, flip the coin, who goes first, whatever. Right, though your first one though on the twenty fifth would just be dedicated to the race series.
Race series, yeah.
Uh huh.
Okay, so the one on the twenty fifth, obviously what I would imagine would have a lot of, uh, community interest, uh, the impact of the race series on the community, but, um um, I don't know, maybe if you did put the animal shelter around there, maybe you'd get a lot of people too, it's dependent.
Hmm.
It's, but it's cool, I'll just mention the other for whatever.
I think that's, that's.
Yeah, we just started like people to our work sessions, they're, I'm already.
Will you guys be at those joint workshops?
Yeah, yeah, staff will be there.
That's a, eliminates extra strain on county staff hours, i.e. tax dollars.
And if there is, you know, something to, I mean, we can pivot decently quickly on getting a town hall put together, getting things planned out so the commissioners are prepared and staff are there to help you answer questions, cause, you know give you an example, like traditional, traditional town hall, like, we, you know, you, you guys would go down to Twin Lakes, you could sit down in the schoolhouse and people would be like, I have this question, and you're like, where did that come from, oh, right, I'm gonna get back to you, that kinda stuff, or you can set up the town hall to be like very specific of like, we're gonna talk about uh, Lake County's water rights and why we created the Water Enterprise, right, and then that's where you want staff
Uh huh.
there to help you answer those technical questions.
Yeah.
Feels.
So, a- anyway, there's a couple different ways to do it, but you do have the quarterly cadence with the city and that does allow the public to capture both elected bodies, or, or two of the
One on each.
larger ones and town, or impactful ones and town, who'd be nice to everybody else who's elected, uh.
What were you gonna say?
Um, I feel like a calendar would be valuable. Because also in April, there is, so we're gonna have joint work sessions every quarter.
Yes.
In April, there is the community, state of the community. Um, like I don't want us to be doing another town hall in April, but I feel like sussing out some that are just traditional town halls, where it's just a Q and A, access to your electeds after hours. Versus our topic town halls, where we wanna do a deep dive, say, into the pool or whatever, I would like to have.
Okay.
What?
What?
Yeah, thank you, um.
Oh my gosh.
Sounds good.
I, I was just thinking back, it was the, the, the word.
Yeah.
And then she said deep dive, wow, very clever.
Thank you, um anyway, I would, I would like to do actual quarterly town halls, what, what the topics are or if they're just open and available. I'm down with either, but that would be my preference.
Would you be okay if we create a draft calendar for the, the board to react to, maybe just throw out some suggested items of like, let's say, traditional town hall
Yeah.
start somewhere, probably wanna see everybody, but then topical things would be important, okay?
Yeah. Especially since I'm sure something's gonna be on the ballot this year that people are gonna wanna hear from us about.
Yeah.
Like we should hold a space, knowing we're gonna need a town hall.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
The feasibility on the pool will be done in April or in May, so.
Very cool.
You could actually do a deep dive in the book.
Oh my god, I love it. Yeah, I would love a draft calendar for us to discuss.
Right. Let's, um, Sammy, we'll get together and create that, which is proposed dates and times, and I think I think the mayor and I agreed the end of each quarter, so hopefully the last week of each quarter, um, but.
What about December?
But first week, yes, it's, it's, yeah, quite skip Q four, or anyway, but.
Yeah, yeah, Q one, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
You all down with that?
Sure, sounds good. Okay. Um, is that it for agenda item fifteen? Have we guided?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody okay with the guidance there?
Yes.
Alright, um, oh, sixteen, I'm back on page three, sorry. Agenda item number sixteen, county manager's monthly report led by Tim Bergman, take it away.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner, uh, so these, so it's, it's the first one obviously I'm doing with you guys who went, went through orientation, so historically, these were done like at the second meeting of the month, collect things from department directors and provide those updates.
Hmm.
An ability to have a discussion with the board as well of, you know, the different various topics, right, that you hear of in the community as well or you need more information on, so we're gonna be figuring out what that looks like, kinda with the two week lag, this, this agenda item in and of itself might be the one that like it needs a bit of an exception to the week rule or two week rule, just be as you get updates from department directors.
Yeah.
Um, but anyway, I encourage you and the next manager to continue those manager updates, um. The ones I have for you are kinda just like topical things, uh, for now, um as the, uh, Ducharme talked about it at the beginning of our meeting a year ago, um, but ski drawing was a huge, huge success this weekend, I talked to Duffy last night, um, he was super stoked, uh, about it, he also understands the impact to his, our community. So he was wondering if you guys wanted, um a debrief with him, uh, learn how ski drawings put on, all that kinda stuff, if that's, if the board's intrigued by that, or if you guys know Duffy and just wanna reach out and talk to him. Uh, whatever, let me know, he also apologized about the, the porta potties. Whatever, let me know, he also apologized about the the porta potties uh in the dumpster left in our parking lot, they were supposed to be picked up uh Sunday evening. Somewhere in the mix, that didn't happen, but they were picked up this morning, so he was sorry about that. Um but.
Not a big deal, right?
No, they just took it, took away some of the parking and some of the ADA parking, but um we should be, we'll get it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, but if you guys are interested in that, I can follow up with Duffy and find a twenty minute timer if you guys are.
I'd rather chat with him individually.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
All the horses are safe?
All of them are safe.
Yeah, all the horses are safe, there was only, uh there were no stumbles, there was a.
Yeah, that was my.
Not scared.
Broken or fractured heel bone and somebody who already had like knee issues kinda shattered their tib, what?
A human scare? A human scare?
Yes, yes.
Well, that's something you have for a while.
It was.
Seriously, yeah.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
If you gotta, if you gotta land on your tib.
So just.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Chris, I was a passionate about jump design.
And pull in. You got pull in.
Yes, yes. Um, but it is, it is a huge event and I do wanna shout out uh to Michael and his team, they helped a lot with this, getting the snow. Helping prep it, um keeping the snow there, cause it was so hot, all of that, so it really is a full. Community effort and like good collaboration between the city and county for this pool then.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Some people might say a little too crowded.
But and that's why Duffy was like, if they would like to talk with me, yeah.
My kids said that it was full of social influencers.
Yeah.
Here's the furs and the costumes and all that.
Uh huh. Yeah.
Yeah.
Get a look, I have, you know, I have a fur one. Not a new one.
Still social.
There's just a lot of, a lot of folk there were uh all hat, no cattle.
He was like, are you from Aspen?
Yes.
All hat, no cattle.
Yes, cause I was probably no, no bathing suit on my clothes though.
Yeah. Right, right.
Only when I go to the airport.
Um, it is a great community event and it is a big boon to uh our businesses and showing us ourselves off.
Yeah.
Can I, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
At the Lifetime meetings, they have been bringing up a lot.
I was gonna.
That 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 we should, they should be treated just like boom days and Ski Jarring. And I just wanna say my, our response has been. That Boom Days and Ski Jarring are by locals for locals. And Lifetime is. By a billion dollar company, not necessarily for locals. And that our permitting is really similar, we're not treated differently.
Yeah. This got forcibly thrust upon me in a conversation as well.
Uh huh.
Um, it wasn't very nicely worded, um but. I never got a chance to process and say, those events are for like children?
Yeah.
It's free for anyone to walk around, it's not. A very high level like exclusive club that is only, you know, you're only participating if you get into the race, you know, like.
Yeah.
Little kids walking out with their parents, you know, enjoying all the different sights and stuff. In these two rate, in the in the Ski Jarring and Boom Days, did I was real, just shocked that they were making the correlation.
Yeah.
When you s- you see the impact on our business con, like our businesses downtown, literally could not get in. I couldn't even walk in through the people to many of our establishments and I don't experience that during. Um any of the six races that get thrown, so I just wanna say that is gonna come up. At the end of March and I think it's worth.
Yeah.
Pausing and like acknowledging that this last weekend was very different.
Yeah. It was.
Yeah.
Um, it was, it was the the biggest one, but I think, you know, over the three, has three years, probably because of moving around.
Probably because of the.
Yes, yeah, um, but it has grown a lot bigger and Ski Jarring and Alex and Duffy all all acknowledge that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um but if you also look back historically at our sales tax numbers for these months, like this is.
Sure, yeah.
This is definitely a boon for our community, um and also good on you guys for. Um and sticking up to the corporation in town because they will deflect on a lot of things, um so.
Yeah.
Good on you, and yes, everybody has to go through the same permitting process.
Yeah.
Um, I caused a lot of consternation when I very first started. Because Boom Days and Ski Jarring did not go through the same permitting process, and I was like, that's cool, I respect it, I love it. I love that these are events by our community for our community, they have to go through the same permitting process.
Yeah.
So everyone does go through the same permitting process.
Yeah.
I've heard, uh, just to clarify that people are, some of the old school locals are like, we need to keep Ski Jarring, and I was like, I didn't know that was. A thing, that's not a thing.
Like as the county?
Close the place, yeah, just like we gotta keep Ski Jarring and.
Oh, it's, I mean, it's a huge cultural thing, I mean, you know, a lot of the guys, um, you know, Michael's team and I, cause I think this this year is the seventy sixth. Year one, um, so it is definitely like a a uh modern era historical artifact of this community, um.
But it's not endangered, it is.
Yeah.
Nah, you just say, yeah, okay, I'll do that.
Yeah, I did, I was like, okay.
I promise.
I'll play for Ski Jarring.
Okay.
The only, the only issue maybe in future years is just, you know, the snow, but Michael's very good at hiding snow in various places, so.
Snow, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, cause it has to be clean snow too, we can't just bring store.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can't build terrain parks in town with the snow, they scrape up off the street.
Right. Yeah, um, uh, second update, just a quick update, uh transit update for our coaches, um the title work, uh I believe is being uh completed. Been working with uh Andrew and Cindy in the clerk's office, they've been very helpful, so we should have the plates for that, so. The actual Lake County coaches, um it should be in service soon, and those are the ones that you'd see, we'll have the bike racks on front and all of that, so we'll.
Hmm.
Currently downtowners using the uh leased vehicles, then they'll switch to county's vehicles, so we'll we'll have those in service, probably by next week.
Your bosses signed the titles for me, they're they're the whatever.
Yeah. Yeah.
Work.
The title.
Certificate of origin.
Right, yeah, yeah. Um courthouse renovation update, so M W L Architecture Jim uh and his colleague Pete were on site a couple of weeks ago, so they did the. Full tour, um they met with the sheriff, walked through his whole space, his hopes and desires and the reality uh of it. Uh similar with the fifth judicial district with the chief judge, uh Chris joined that meeting. She also joined the meeting with Deanna Cullum, uh learning about their hope streams and also reality of uh. What's going on uh with that, so. Uh we're also working on procuring an ALTA survey for our lot for this, understanding where the utilities, everything is, and just have a better understanding there. Um also started working with our local history uh folks through the department, just understanding uh the records that are kept downstairs in the. Clerk and recorder's wallet and the treasurer's wallet, um, cause that's just empty, well, it's not empty space, uh it's locked up space right now, that could be used. Um for something else, but we need to think about archiving our records, our historical documents of Lake County government. Um, so next week, M W L's gonna meet with Sheriff Beckman uh in the team. On the programming kind of for the jail space and office space, and then from there is when we'll start to see like the initial sketches, so in the, I think in the. Uh beginning of April, you'll have a work session with the full team, M W L Architecture D P M, which is our owner's rep. Um, the executive committee members, which is made up of staff, um folks from each of those firms, then also from F C I Constructors. I think from then, um is there, I think the board should decide on for the executive committee, if you want a B O C C rep on that. Which is just kinda like the regular update meeting, where are we at, how are we doing things? So I think that'll be a good time for the board to uh choose a designate for that. Probably um by May, the R F P, late April, by May, the R F P for the architect record will be released. Um and then we'll hire, you will hire a uh architect of record, which is what M W L will manage. Um, might seem silly to have the architect managing an architect, but it's actually gonna prove very, very helpful and beneficial because. Uh Jim McLaren from M W L is um, understands all the architect's tricks to increase costs or change things or what about this, so. Really what uh Jim will do, get it, get you to sketch, the architect of record will get you to construction documents, then those go to F C I Constructors. For pricing. Um to your point, Commissioner Bullock, the um everything is phased out of like, you know, priority one, two, three. And then like all the way through to like a full f- full renovation of the building, so you actually have that full complete plan. Which will be way outside of our budget, but at least you have that full plan, and then you can make budgetary decisions along the way. Uh with various add-ons or alternates or, you know, things that you're not comfortable with. Also in April will be your work session with Alan, um from Stiefel, to provide you that overview, I just like. Just kept missing, so they, I'm unable to book that work session, but you'll be able to meet with Alan, so you can fully understand all of the the C O C process and everything in there. Any questions on courthouse renovations?
Why would we pay for the full plan if we know we're not going to use it?
So you, so you have it, um it was part of the bid of that, it actually didn't like add on like an excess, like a a huge amount to M W L's. Contract, but that was part of the way that um Jim framed his response uh to that of like being like. I can get you a plan within this budget, but you're still gonna have to do something some future day. Would you like the full plan? And I was like, oh, actually, I I would, and um, so you would.
Just a sketch plan.
It did, yes, exactly, just a sketch plan, not not construction documents for the whole building, no, no, no.
Not for the.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But laying out the various phases of like, you know, if then, if then, how to get through everything for future decision makers, um.
Yeah, yeah.
Who are in charge of this building.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Cool.
Uh for the manager, hi, oh, sorry, do you have any questions? Keep going, any questions on that? Okay. Um, uh county manager hiring update, so to date, we have had thirty five applicants. I would say um after doing reviews with H R, say there's eleven, maybe twelve uh qualified for interviews. Um, it's a miscommunication between myself and H R on when the posting should close, but it will close this Thursday. Which is fine, so I'm open for a few more days. I'll have the draft questions for round one and round two interviews sent to the board probably tomorrow. I would suggest Commissioner Lee and Chris and our C L T member for round one interviews, we can start booking things, we're. Probably too late to book things for this Friday, but next week, doing the first round of interviews. Um then the week of three seventeen, individual commissioner interviews that we've discussed about. Um, I think you will need to appoint an interim county manager on three twenty five.
Uh huh.
Because we've meant to miss the timeline of the public posting for the finalists, so I would suggest appoint Lauren as your interim county manager on the twenty fifth. Um that next week, you should publish the finalists, uh do that public posting and then appoint a county, new county manager the week of April fourteenth.
Okay.
Any questions, thoughts on that, where we're at, things moving on?
Well, just give me the questions as soon as, as soon as we got them, so then certainly can run.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
That's a lot, thirty five is a lot.
Yeah.
Careful to know what the rejection, we, I'd like to see all of them.
We're going to, we're we're gonna, there's gonna be.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We're starting all of them.
I know, we're, forget all of them.
Oh, good.
Um.
That's why we're a team, that's why we're a team.
Got a simple.
Yeah.
Alright.
So let's say about if there are a little over, I mean, a third of them are would be qualified.
I see, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, good, that's a good response, better than uh.
Yeah.
Some of the other vacancies.
Yeah.
Like let's say. Like lay offs maybe.
Yeah.
Uh furloughs, um.
Not, yeah, for early offs and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I wanna give a shout out to the I T team, um cause they did a successful internet service provider cut over from Lumen DeVero. You probably saw Justin's email on that, but that is a big deal, um and a full replacement of all our firewalls.
Save his life.
I T has been, or is a piece of our deferred maintenance here, um so being able to pull that off and do that. Um has been huge and has been great. It has been a wild ride working with Lumen, uh we would call them with a customer service issue and they would be like, we don't have an account. Well, should I pay forty five hundred bucks a month? Um, and that was literally every time, uh we would call them, so. Doing that was a big deal, uh so I just want you to know that you should be very proud of your I T staff for being able to pull that off. And do it in a way that has not disrupted uh service operations.
Well.
We are, we are very proud.
T.
Um.
We saw Sebastian last night at, what time was that, like seven thirty? He was still working.
He's a night owl.
Yeah.
I love it, that's cool.
Yeah, yeah. Um Candace and I and team and other folks are working on a refresh of the finance policies. Kind of taking everything that we we have now, the creation of them, when I started, there were none, now we have some, but we're going to work to refine those even better. So we've looked at other counties' models there, we'll talk more about that tomorrow. Um operations legal, myself and finance, I believe, and H R working on a records and retention policy and development. And countywide uh records retention, things like that, and then also something for B O C C. Um so, um exclusive of other elected offices, but for 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 the board.
Uh huh.
Um Candace closed the books on twenty twenty four, minus the invoices in today, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um but books are closed, so you'll see, uh starting soon, you'll see the updates on like year to date, how twenty twenty four ended. And then Candace is belieffully starting the next audit.
He does one back to back audits.
Right, great.
Oh, you guys rock. Are we gonna revisit the P card policy anytime soon?
Yeah, so so the suggestion, yeah, the suggestion will be is to take, we have all those separate policies and the suggestion will be is to create just kind of like a master policy.
We're doing.
Mm hmm.
That has grants and P card and finance and budgeting and procurement and contracts in one policy.
Uh huh. Yeah.
So it's it's there and easier and not as as disparate, so yes. In fact, next week.
Thank you, Candace. Oh, next week.
Is that?
Dang. Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
That's tomorrow, you're not done tomorrow, I wanna ask a few questions and get some feedback from you guys.
Tomorrow.
Yeah. Yes.
And then do you.
Where?
Fix it.
Okay. Okay. Alright.
Now, any other questions or anything I can, information I can provide the board? Or Jim, I mean.
Uh, just that, uh we did lose our child welfare and adult protective service uh deputy director. So we posted for that position as well as another caseworker. And hope to be hiring as soon as possible, but if you hear anything in the community, have grace on D H S right now.
Anything we can do to assist them, anyway, is there any?
Most, um, yeah.
Long volume there.
Give a crew.
Yeah.
That's right, every day.
You have anyone good?
Every day.
Do you have to have a college degree in a specific type of area and have to go through three months of training, so.
Uh huh.
So, yeah.
There's gotta be somebody doing this job out there in a place that's not nearly as fun as London.
Same, same.
Oh, and I did, sorry, I'm sorry, I have one more thing, I know, if you were talking through this, do you want? The agendas to change to just have public comment, just public comment, on, off the agenda, say whatever you want, at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting? Or do you want it, uh to leave it as public comment for items on the agenda, and then for each agenda item. Have a bullet or or a letter that says, you know, led by, and then a B that says. Open for public comment, or or like, how do you, how do you guys wanna do that?
I don't know, I felt like we we came to a conclusion that I completely forgot about by um the beginning of this meeting.
Could we just have in within the agenda, say.
We can uh.
Opportunity for public comment.
At the beginning and end of the meeting, or do you want it for each agenda item?
And.
We can.
Um, we can do that for each agenda item, we just need to, um.
For just people in the room.
Just for people in the room, yeah.
Yeah, if it's important to them and they're gonna show up here.
They're just for people in the room?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no online public comment except for the beginning.
Hmm.
And and why does?
You can look at that.
Yeah.
Or you can selectively decide, oh, and here you allow, I'll look at that, just make sure we don't trip up on that.
Yeah.
Have to be in person because in the fact that you allow access to meeting via electronic means.
Yeah, and I get the accessibility piece too, like we're clearly just trying to manage the. The pilings on while also being accessible, so if it's possible, I think that's the needle we'd like to thread, if you could look into it.
And why is the, why does it always say, are there any comments not on the agenda, why doesn't it say? Also, can you want, can you?
For the land use files that you've already had the public hearing for, um.
Oh, okay.
So, eh just as part of that extrajudicial process, right? You've already done the public hearing for that. You can, I mean, you can, you can hear it, but you can't hear it again, you can open it for public comment, I guess, before they, after they vote?
I know, I was gonna say, once the public hearing is closed, you can't take public comment on those files, and that's that's what makes it a little dicey to say for every item you. Should have it available for public comment.
And also comments at the end after we've made a decision.
Right.
It's kinda like, uh, we're gonna sit here and listen to how you made your own decision.
I think, you know, taking questions off of chat, you know. Would be, uh, we'll put those on our, on our website, the Q and A section or whatever, like, but engaging again. would be, uh, we'll put those on our, on our website, the Q and A section or whatever, like, but engaging again, you know. We're so good at keeping our ratings looking, yeah, I bounce, that, you know.
We're so good at that.
Well, could be, uh, as I was saying, but, but the issue is, is if the folks online are doing chat comments related to what you're discussing,
Right.
again, they won't, it won't be effective after you've made a decision.
Yeah.
So this is
There's gotta be a creative way to do this, right? There's gotta be a way
Yeah.
to allow accessibility, but to not have things de- devolve.
Derail.
Yeah.
Yeah, so to, that we're on the ease.
And that's
I think we should just keep it as it is. I mean, we were hired to make decisions and people can come in and weigh in or weigh in online and get into the meeting, say whatever they want and yell at us, but ultimately our elected officials, we are, it's not really a democracy.
Well, when it comes to, yeah, when it comes to public comment, that is absolutely within your discretion, whether you allow it or not.
To represent democracy.
Yeah.
Right.
There's a, public access does not mean public comment. So, you know, your only obligation is to allow them access to.
And we're getting plenty of comments offline, so we know where people stand.
Right.
A lot of stuff, I didn't know. I, I think we uh can open up new avenues outside of our regular meetings to allow for public questions, comments, concerns. You know, like Sammy's got the Q and A thing started, you know, it's sort of like in the early stages of it, but I feel like we've got that, you know, like how many, how many different things can we do to?
Well, I feel like, I kind of feel like we're kind of rehashing things we've already talked about.
Yeah.
The reason we wanted to offer more public comment is because things come up and discussions happen in this room that really help educate people on the topic of the day. And for people to have a timely opportunity to engage with that topic and us is really valuable if we can offer it. Um and we're trying to keep it from devolving. So I feel like it's a little bit of a culture shift is what we're trying to offer, and that takes more than the two months that we've been in office. I also, I, I think that what we had come to, offering more public comment throughout the agenda, doesn't have to be everything. I, I agree, it doesn't have to be everything, but maybe some of the topics that we know are going to be people are gonna be curious about. Maybe we could make those specific, like there will be comment, public comment available here. And then if Chris can see if that's a, since we, since it's up, since it's at our discretion, if we can not receive public comment after our main public comment section.
Maybe in, one thing I was getting ready to drop was maybe the suggestion would be since you review your agendas in advance
Yeah.
at that point in time, because you will have had some feedback, I expect, on the, the items that are of more public interest to say at that time, so that when the agenda is posted,
Yeah.
people will know if you're gonna be accepting public comment on those items.
Yes.
That might be a way to kind of compromise on those items.
Yeah. Cause I appreciate like Peter Day was like, how do I know what I can comment on? And if we're talking about something that somebody then all of a sudden is like, wait, have you considered this? Like that's of value to us
Yeah.
too, as we're discussing.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't wanna like turn that off just cause of the rigidity of
Yeah.
public comment just at the beginning.
Yeah, that's good too.
But how do we determine what we think, you know, like the sorry to, to throw another curveball, but how do we determine what we think is of interest to the public or not? It's not
Do it, yeah. Well, I think we could have known that the, the Colorado Energy Office was gonna need public comment, and that was awesome that Emily and Jeff were here. I think we, we got heads up, especially from Tina, what she was curious about. Like we are hearing from the public what they want more information on, the S E planning um thing.
We'll do a little public service announcement, you know, thirty seconds at the end of uh regular or special meeting or work sessions to inform the public of what is on next week's agenda and to reach out to us with
Well, it'll be available and we do go over it with Sandra every time. So they'll hear it either in public, they'll hear it either in our
Yeah. Okay. You're right.
meetings, or they'll see it posted now.
And then the regular meeting, your agendas will be posted now a week before the regular meeting on that Tuesday, the Tuesday before.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like Tina, like Tina, you know, she went through each one and was like, I have questions about this one, I have questions about eight, I have questions about thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so that will be now available to everybody.
Yeah. Yeah.
What do you think about that, Tina? I know it's late.
Um my thinking isn't thinking, it's really a thinking.
If Chris can figure out how we can stop, uh how, if we're allowed to not receive public comment online after the initial public comment, would you all be okay with still entertaining public comment for specific agenda items from the room?
Yeah, as long as that's not a form of discrimination against people.
Which is what Chris is gonna like to do.
That's, that's, and that would be my concern, because of the, one of the purposes of having this access to meetings is the accessibility aspect.
Right, right.
Well, I, if you guys are hearing those comments, right, so if we post the agendas and that, and
And so.
please do send it to staff, like, hey, constituent asked about this. We can either update our memos, add in and insert those kind of things, or
Mm-hmm.
as those things trickle in, like we can maybe be reactive to answering your questions, but you know, we can, we can also do it
We can.
that way, but um we'll keep, we'll, we'll keep playing with this one.
We'll keep evolving.
Okay.
Yeah, Chris will take it.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, um we have next, the uh, are we done with agenda item sixteen?
We are, we are.
Good, uh, alright, well, let's move on to the consent agenda. Um can I read all these out loud or should we just say?
Well, do you have, sorry, if we may, right?
You may.
Um uh on uh, just uh two of them, just so the board is aware, so
Yeah.
this is why we put the approval of the annual renewal of Microsoft licensing subscriptions, including Teams Exchange Defender, Office three sixty five and Intra. It is a budgeted expense. Microsoft as a corporation has a billing threshold where they will send an invoice to you. We're below set threshold monthly.
Yeah.
So we do not spend enough with them to get an invoice from them, so to pay them. Um so you will see when you look at the uh February bills, there's a P card expense for fifty K. That is our Microsoft licensing, since we could not get an invoice from them. So just want, I want you guys to be aware of that.
That's an annual?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, annual.
It'll actually be in March.
Oh, it's gonna be on your March bill, okay.
We've been asking them to bill us and they have not.
That's not enough for a bill, fifty K?
Okay.
Okay.
Up to
With security flexibility, like, but it won't be posted in March, so it's fifty five K on one.
Yeah.
Bill Gates needs a fresh pop of his cane.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Um and then that, that purchase order twenty five oh one, we did have an emergency repair um at uh, at a lot at Mountain View. Um so the chair did give me authority to sign off on that. It was unbudgeted, it was twenty two hundred? It was about like two, two K for that emergency repair.
Is it another one?
No, this was the one, yeah. Um just, yeah, this is the terrible afterwards, but I just wanted to talk through those so you guys knew what they were, what they could do.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool. Um alright, uh motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
I am, we'll second the motion. Alright, to a vote? Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Good job, man. I do, I do. I do.
Alright, um packet materials for agenda items are available upon request at uh, at us, at lakecountyco.gov. Um to subscribe to email or text notifications, please visit Lake County Government website. Alright. Does that conclude today's regular meeting in Lake County, Board of County Commissioners? It's three nineteen P M, right on time. And uh we're gonna wrap this one up.
Good job, Chad, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your patience. Thank you, Tracy.
Yes, thank you, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy.
Oh my gosh. I love your doodle. What have I missed there?
Um
Little rug? Yes.